Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February 13th, 2025 School Board Meeting for the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. And just a reminder that this agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the Public Board Minutes, which are available on the district's website. We have a special guest that will be with us for a very long time, hopefully, who will now read the disclosure in Spanish for us.
Este agenda fue preparado antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está siguiente a cambiar, cambiarnos en el momento del reunión. Cualquiera cambio se antarea, antará del momento en que se reiniciar y nuevamente después de la reunión en la actes de la gente pública de estando disponibles en el sitio del distrito.
Thank you very much. That's not easy when you're asked to do it on the spot, but we're going to introduce Norma a little bit later on. So at this time, if you could all please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance led by Pastor Williams. And if everybody could remain standing after the pledge for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. The first moment of silence this evening, and we do these moments of silence for the people who are new to the board meeting, to honor those of our educational family who have gone before us or the close relatives of members of our educational family. The first moment of silence this evening is for Beverly Metta. Beverly, the mother-in-law of Amanda Metta, and Amanda Metta is our Chair of K through 12 Music Department. Excellent reputation, very hardworking person. Did not know Beverly, so I'm going to read a bit what was given to me. Beverly was always as an active member of the community. She volunteered with a number of organizations, including the Walk Hill Senior Organization, serving as a president for many years, with Literacy Volunteers of America, and as a Sunday School teacher. Beverly was also a poll worker for the town of Walk Hill, a constant creator and crafter. She's always looking for her next creative endeavor. Everyone who knew her was touched by her kindness and generosity. She was always putting the needs of others before herself. And you know, that sounds like Amanda Metta. I've known Amanda for many years. Emma Jean Kenny, the mother of Jen Kenny, and Jen is the Chair of the Special Ed Department, Humanities Department, Special Ed in the high school. Emma was known for her fiercely resilient and to be fiercely resilient and loyal. She was a friend of all who knew her. Emma Jean's memory will be forever honored as loving and a kind soul who left an indelible mark on the hearts of many. Isabel F. Andrews. I work with Isabel on committees. She taught science and math at Middletown High School, a very, very brilliant person, extremely intelligent. She did not begin her career as a teacher. She began working in the defense industry, and she worked on the first nuclear submarine, the USS Nautilus. She was the first of her family, actually, to graduate from college. She, as I said, she worked for many years in Middletown. She was, after retirement, she became a volunteer math teacher at Northampton County Community President. She was very deeply involved in St. Anne's Parish, her church, and she most notably founded the parish's, I'm sorry, Saint Vincent de Paul Organization at her church. Again, a very respected individual in the education community. Gerald Martin Tonner. Jerry was a bus driver for Mid-City for many years, transporting our students without a problem. He served his country as military police in Vietnam. He was an active member of Mark Carmel St. Joseph Churches, where he served and many committees which benefited the youth of the community. And finally, Susan Brettenfield. I work with Susan. She was a security aide for over 36 years in our district, in various buildings, including the high school. Susan, again, well-respected by staff and students, very, very hard worker. She used to take on extra assignments if asked. So please remember these individuals in your thoughts and prayers. They will all be missed in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. And I do want to acknowledge Mr. Perino, who has done this for the school board for many years now, and that's remembering those who have had an impact on our school community for many years, so they're not ever forgotten. And John puts a lot of effort in the words that he says. So thank you very much, John, for all of that. Mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown is Tobiasson.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. The mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown: We strive to provide physically sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously support our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to become competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiasson. Roll call, Mrs. Monchery.
Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
Mr. Perino.
Yeah.
Mr. Rett.
Present.
Ms. Romero.
Here.
Ms. Tobiasson.
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Yeah.
Pastor Williams.
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a full house tonight. I need approval, motion and a second for tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need an approval for the regular meeting minutes of January 16th.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval of emergency meeting, January 23rd, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval of the action items only in board workshop minutes from January 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Something that's very dear to our hearts tonight, a long trek that began with many of my predecessors, Ms. Tobiasson, Pastor Williams, other members of the board. I know when I ran for the school board two years ago at a candidate's forum, I mentioned that one of my goals as a board member was to get a student onto the Board of Education. And through the will of our voters in the school district, this past May, the voters of Middletown approved putting a student board member onto our Board of Education. And after an extensive due diligence process, we are here on February 13th to record history for the Board of Education here at Middletown. So I need a motion for the approval of the appointment of the Board of Education's non-voting student board member, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education, that they hereby appoint Norma Avila as the ex-officio non-voting student member of the Board of Education to serve a term of February 13th, 2025 through June 30th of 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasson, seconded by Pastor Williams, and everybody else. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Congratulations. And at this time, I'm going to ask that Ms. Avila head on over to the podium and our district clerk, Mrs. Monchery, do the oath of office, and then joined by Mrs. Morelero, who will have her sign. So Mrs. Monchery will administer the oath to Norma Avila.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Norma Avila.
I, Norma Avila.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of non-voting school board member.
Of non-voting school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right. That deserved. So when Norma gets back over here, we're going to give her an opportunity to introduce herself to all of you, tell her story to all of you. The floor is yours.
Good evening, buenas tardes to all. My name is Norma Avila. I've been living here in Middletown since the fourth grade, so over eight years. I have a background of being a first generation, coming from Honduras, born there, but raised here in New York for 17 years. I have been in a lot in the community doing STEM night, which changed to Experience Your Program Night, and also being a part of teams and captains of the wrestling team, the flag football team, the dance team. Joined many extracurriculars, being a PRI-Live Puerto Rico Hispanic Youth Leadership Institution. I will say it in Spanish for anyone. Buenas tardes, yo me llamo Norma Avila, yo soy hondureña, nací allí pero crecí aquí en el estado de Nueva York. Ha vivido aquí por 17 años, pero aquí en Middletown, ha vivido aquí por más de ocho años. Ha estado en mucho deporte haciendo flag football, wrestling, libre luchas.
Libre.
Libras, sí, lucha libre. Teniendo una posición de empujar a mis compañeros en la dirección buena todo el tiempo en cada deporte. Hecho un programa que se llama Puerto Rico Hispanic. Leadership, how do you say that? Leaderasco. Me enseña mucho a los niños de cómo hacer este proceso que estoy aquí ahorita mismo. Yeah. Thank you.
So to add that she's probably, you know, shortchanging herself a little bit because on Monday she will be at Mount St. Mary College in the Section Nine Girls Wrestling Championships. So good luck on Monday as well. She mentioned she's part of the Puerto Rican Youth Leadership Conference. They've gone up to Albany. She mentioned when she formally introduced herself to the board earlier this evening that she was one of about 100 kids that was selected to represent the Hudson Valley on a trip to Puerto Rico, which she took in November, and sat with the legislature of Puerto Rico, as well as some other government officials as well. So she has a strong voice. Some of you may remember that when we first put out the call for a student board member, it happened to be on a night, I believe, when we were honoring the girls' wrestling team, and she happened to be in the audience, and right away came up to the microphone and said, keep me in mind. So hopefully, you're going to see her long after she's left Middletown. She is a senior, and I think one of the important reasons why we wanted to make sure that we placed a senior in the position this year was so she can be an active participant in selecting a junior for next year's student representative on the board as well. She will have the opportunity throughout the meeting to voice her concerns and her suggestions and her advice on every single motion. Student members cannot vote on agenda items, but they will be more than happy during the discussion phase to entertain any questions. Our hope is that she gets out to every single school building at least once this year to talk to the student representatives of each of our school buildings, so she can bring their concerns back here to the board table as well. You know, we're going to make mistakes during this process, and that's okay, but we'll make it better each and every year, so they can have an active voice. And I think even tonight, we learned a little bit about maybe possibly putting different students on all board committees, whether they be Audit Committee or Policy Committee, so they have a stronger voice in the school board process. So congratulations once again, Norma. So moving on with our agenda items, I need a motion to approve Personnel Memorandum 16A Number One.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasson, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need a motion for Instructional Personnel Memorandum 16B, numbers one through 11.
So moved.
Moved by Mitchell Williams, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need a motion for Non-Instructional Approval of Personnel Memorandum 16C, numbers one through nine.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval of Financial Memorandum 16D, numbers one through five. Moved by Ms. Tobiasson, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval of Special Services Memorandum 15E, numbers one and two. Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval for Change Orders 11F, numbers one through four.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Pastor Williams. Before discussion, Bill, do you want to give us an update on what those change orders pertain to?
Sorry for that. Yes, so we have four different change orders, as you mentioned. There's one for current and anticipated future renovation, abatement work in the renovation process at Twin Towers. There are two for, excuse me, for the removal of unsuitable soils and disposal off-site, as well as for supplying the proper soil needed for compaction. And then there is one that's to provide labor and materials to relocate some lighting, fire alarm cabling, refeed receptacles, and other items like that in the construction zone.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Bill? Mr. Perino.
I talked to Bill about this during the week because there's one change order that's fairly large with its soil, and we're well within our contingency budget for Twin Towers. As was stated, we're doing this building, I think it's 80 million, but to build a new school, it'd be about 180 million without the land. So, you know, it's a good school. It will be an excellent facility when we get through.
And I think we've been told that, you know, when the Board of Education first approved renovating Twin Towers versus building a brand-new middle school, people sometimes forget that that building was built in the 1930s, got a good amount of 80 years before we had to put major money in it to renovate it, and from what we're told, it's such a strong building that it'll be good for another 80 years after this renovation project. So definitely got our money's worth when it comes to Twin Towers. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval of the 2025 Certified Voting Machine Operators and Table Inspectors List for the 2024-25 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasson, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. These are our fine folks who help us out during the budget and school board elections each May.
Mr. President, I just want to make a note, make a note, as Mr. Perino always does, that we receive this information well in advance of these meetings, so nothing is just, you know, straight lines, straight through. We do receive all this information. We've had time to review it. We have time to ask the necessary questions if we have any confusion about any of this information. So I don't want, we never want anybody to think that we just, you know, put everything through without, you know, taking great thought and great care in what we do. So.
Thank you for that reminder. We like nine-nothing votes, but they're not mandatory at all. Next up, our Board Member Recognition and Community Updates, and we're going to hand the mic off to Mr. Perino to do our ELCS Student of the Month.
Thank you. Thank you, President Estrada. Would our Student of the Month, with the high school administrator and the family, please come up to the mic and members of the ELCS.
And our student rep's going to go up there to acknowledge our Student of the Month.
Wayne Whitaker, the administrator's going to...
Good evening, Superintendent Creedon, members of the board. It is my pleasure and honor to recognize Aiden Notta as our ELCS Student of the Month. He is a member of the 2023 cohort. He theoretically is in 10th grade, however, at this time, he has earned 12.75 credits, so he has entered junior status.
Right. Wow.
Yes. There is more. He's very modest.
That'll come in handy when it comes to college, believe me.
Well, once you hear what he wants to be, you know, the modesty will help. He is the epitome of a scholar athlete. He is a member of our JV wrestling team, varsity football team, and varsity baseball team. He has a GPA at this time, which I'm sure it'll go up, of 99.41. He plans on taking a number of superclasses next year. He's looking into Stony Brook or Binghamton. I went to Stony Brook, so I'm cheering on the Sea Wolves here, but, you know, I'm not a Bearcat guy, no offense to the Bearcats. So, and, you know, just a hard worker, genuine. Ms. Gerda, who's his counselor, you know, had high praise for him, and he wants to, perhaps, you know, there's still time to decide, be a lawyer, possibly educational law. So really, just the epitome of what Middletown is all about, what our scholars are all about, and we are really, really proud of what he's doing and what he's going to accomplish. And again, his parents are here, his younger brother is here, and it was nice to see him giving his brother a little, you know, what's your call?
That'd be the young gentleman who's soaking in the chairs.
He gave his brother a headlock earlier, so that was nice to see. So Aiden, do you want to say anything?
It's an honor to be here and to be recognized for this award, and I'm very grateful for the consideration from my guidance counselor, and I'm very pleased.
Congratulations.
We have two members of our ELCS Club here this evening. Earl, do you want to come on up and introduce our other member?
Myself.
Mr. Odom, Earl Odom.
Myself first. Good evening. I apologize for my tardiness. I wanted to get here a little sooner. I was coming up from Jersey, me and my other half here, Tony D'Amio, is another member of the ELCS Large 2079, excuse me, 97. On behalf of the ELCS Club Student of the Month, Aiden, if I butcher your name, don't hurt me, please. Notta?
Notta, yeah.
Okay. February 2025, the Middletown City School District and ELCS Club Large Number 1097 recognizes our exceptional students and community members for their achievements. A well-deserved honor to present that to you. Now you can say something if you like, again. Are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
You will be getting another certificate directly from the ELCS. We'll have our district clerk pass it on to the high school, okay? Good, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Awesome job. Great job, Aiden. We'll move on to our Board Member Community Updates. We'll start it off with Mr. Moore.
Sweet. Thank you. First, I just want to talk about the high school graduation. I had the opportunity to attend my first winter graduation, and it was actually, like, outstanding. I was actually left there pretty impressed by the number of students that we had that I was able to graduate this past winter, and just being in the space with them was pretty outstanding. And I want to give kudos to Mr. Estrada for your outstanding presentation as well towards the students, giving them an outlook to what to look forward to and what to be proud of as graduates here in Middletown. I want to fast-forward to just some updates from Mont Hagan Middle School that the principal was able to share with me, Mr. Dominic. This week, well, next week coming up, the scholars will be taking their winter math maps. And then also, February 21st, 6:00 PM, there's the Winter Dance. February 24th, Family ID opens up for spring sports. February 27th is Black History Month Assembly, which I'll be a part of as well during that day. And then February 27th, the Town of Walk Hill Board Meeting, the Black History Scholar Recognition of two Middletown scholars will be recognized for their achievements at 7:30. March 1st, Odyssey in the Mines Competition at Goshen Bosse's will take place. So that's just some other updates. And I have one other update, if you could put it on the screen real quick. Thank you. Coming up, February 28th and March 1st, there's an opportunity for girls' basketball here within the city. We have tremendous amount of young ladies that are very, very talented, especially here within Middletown, Mont Hagan, and Twin Towers, that will take part of this opportunity at the Boys and Girls Club in Circleville. So the information is on the screen. Feel free to register and take part in it. I'm actually one of the youth coaches there for the girls' team, so I'm looking forward to seeing more of our young ladies take part and, you know, continue that breeding ground for them to come up in the ranks to be able to be a scholar here in Middletown. So I'll wrap it up there. Thank you.
That's a mad logo. Who did that?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
That's awesome. I think you could sell that to somebody. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. Well, we have a celebrity among us this evening, a celebrity, and that celebrity is the gentleman who just spoke, Drew Moore, Mr. Andrew Moore. He was recognized in the New York Post with his photo as being a leading realtor of South Bee's Brooklyn office, correct?
Thank you.
And among other things, the Office Unit Leader, Office Production Leader, Sterling Circle of Accomplishment. So congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I didn't even know that was there.
Well, here, there it is. Now you know. Going ahead quickly, shout-out to Marisol Reyes. Marisol Reyes, a security... Reyes. Marisol Reyes, a security, on her security staff, she retired after 25 years of service to the district. And I tell you, at her walk-off at the Carter School, members of the, just about the whole faculty showed up, along with Ms. Creedon and Mr. Tuttle. And it was quite the thing to see her leave and everybody clapping. So we wish you the best of luck, Marisol. I've worked with Marisol, and she's a wonderful person. Okay, Black History Month, and I'm going quick here. I think our staff is doing an excellent job in, in spotlighting the accomplishments of Black Americans. If you look at our district website, there's a screen of the various Black personalities, Afro-American personalities who made a significant contribution to the American experience. This was designed by Jason Tomasuello, member of our tech department. The, the last month, Dr. King, Carolyn Woodward designed another screenshot. Well, going on here, I'm going to go through some of the schools, but they're all, all our schools are doing an excellent job. I want to start off with the William A. Carter School. And these might not be in order because on the William A. Carter School, the staff is doing a, Ms. Jensen is doing a special, a special portrait, I might say, of the, one of our first Afro-American administrators in the district and teachers, William Carter. And I knew Bill as a friend, a neighbor, and a colleague. He did an excellent job. Bill was featured in not only local but national publications. His school is a feeling, again, won national recognition. He called the, the students, every morning, students went into the gymnasium and discussed the day and discussed what they were to accomplish and so on. He ran a very nice school. There's Bill now. And just great. He, he ran a golf program and the students, he admitted students who needed it for free. And I can't say enough about Bill.
And if there were two students who disagreed physically, what would he do?
He had a big old paddle in his-
Yeah. No, but he also had boxing gloves and said, "We're going to take care of this the old-fashioned way."
Yeah. So I'm going to continue, I'll probably continue depending on the site because I'm almost done. I'm going to, the next time, I'm going to talk about Mont Hagan and then Twin Towers and the high school. Everybody's doing a good job this month, believe me. Thank you. I'm done. Don't like to go over.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Rett.
Good evening, everyone. I want to share about a couple of opportunities that commemorate Black History Month. The first is we're putting together a committee for our Second Annual Divine Nine, which is a fraternity, sorority organization, Black fraternity and organizations. We did the first one last year at the high school. So we're looking forward to providing our Second Annual One, which is February 25th, which is a Tuesday. So if we have any teachers that are in the school, in this, in the school district that are members of any fraternities or sororities, please reach out to me, or you can contact our school, our district clerk with your information. I am continually working with Principal Donahue as we round out how we're going to assemble this program again for the second time. We're excited about being able to provide history and information for our seniors, our scholars. And we're really excited about having our second year and providing that. Secondly, I just want to share real quick about my Brothers Keeper, another high school event. This particular program, we're providing a canned food drive, non-personable items to donate to local shelters and families in need. If you have any canned goods or any personalable items, you can bring them directly to the high school, to the College and Career Center, and where they, they'll collect those items. If you need to contact a particular person, you can reach out to Everton Brown, and that's number two. And then finally, in the community, we have something that should be shared up here coming up. This is an event that also round out and commemorate African, I mean, Black, Black History Month, and that's Songs Our Ancestors Sing. This is a core theater group that presents this particular event. A people of global majority showcase will be celebrating diversity and talents in the Warwick Valley Performing Arts Community. I will be performing there as well. It's at the Fetch Bar and Grill. We're really excited about bringing this together and continuing to expand and to spread information about Black history and how we network and globalize together, bringing people together to share some information and ideals regarding this particular historical month. I believe that's all right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Mr. Freddie Williams. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Tobiasin.
Usually I don't have too much-
You'd think the bright red blouse would, you know, catch my attention. My apologies. Ms. Tobiasin.
Thank you. Thank you, Freddie. I just want to comment on two very successful programs that I've heard repetitively through the community this past week. The first one had to do with the Read Aloud that was held, I believe, on February 5th in our schools. And I've heard nothing but positive comments. I know that some of our administrators were involved in going to the schools. Our superintendent was there sharing, as well as our assistant superintendent. And the other successful program that I've heard tremendous applause for is the, I'm going to call it the diversity that was held in the elementary schools last week.
The cultural events.
The cultural event. Okay, I call it, you know, because it did emphasize. So kudos and kudos to the parents and the teachers who were involved because some of the costumes that I saw that the students wore were phenomenal. And these were little kids also, or little children, students, that did an outstanding job. They had no reservations about getting up in front of groups of people and sharing the knowledge and research that they did for either their country or their chosen field. So kudos to everyone involved.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Tobiasin. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Good evening. Coattailing off of Mr. Perino and Mr. William Carter, he was such a monumental figure in the area and beyond. I had the pleasure of cutting his hair a few times. He came in the barber shop that I was working at, and, you know, he's a pretty tall guy. But he was so much bigger in stature because of who he was and what he did. So I definitely want to commend him. Ms. Perino, that was, that was awesome that you acknowledged him and, and sparked back memories about Mr. Carter. He was a great man. And somebody brought up the paddle, which my older brother endured from Mr. Carter at Truman, because I believe he was the principal at Truman, right, John?
No, that was, that was Mr. Um-
Wherever, yeah, wherever it was, my brother endured Mr. Carter's form of, you know, it was a form of love in a different kind of way. But yeah, monumental man. It was, it was awesome to be in his presence and to be able to talk to him and pick up some gems and wisdom from him. Secondly, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Kenneth Ward and Everton Brown, who headed up to Albany, I believe, yesterday with our fellows from My Brothers Keeper. They're doing an excellent job, excellent job. I don't know if I've, we've had a meeting, maybe one since the Christmas gathering we had, me and Pastor Rat for MBK, and we had a fellow alumni, Promise MacArthur, who was in the MBK program when it started. He's now in the Navy doing well, doing special trainings, and he's thriving. So he was able to come back and talk to the kids, and it was a really good send-off into the holiday break. So like I said, MBK is, is doing really well. I'm really happy for the kids that are involved, and the numbers are growing. Actually, one of my, one of my employees, Sean Castillo, made an appearance yesterday to talk about the kids, about the barber industry, how to get started. He's been in for 20 years, I believe. And he's an excellent guy, excellent example of hard work and dedication. So definitely give a shout out to the My Brothers Keeper program. Also, Mont Hagan Middle School, myself and Andrew Moore are liaisons to the school. I've been working closely with the school, especially now. I, I help out with the basketball program there, which Mr. Curtis Rett's son, Marcus Rett, a gem of a, gem of a man, excellent for the kids. And just the inner workings of seeing how the staff, counselors, administrators help guide the kids that are having problems in general, right? Directly with the team, I'm seeing certain things that are happening and able to talk to counselors and admin and staff that it really shows a lot of support for the kids. And that's throughout the district. I'm just highlighting, you know, Mont Hagan because, you know, I'm a liaison at that school, along with Mr. Moore. So they also have, like Mr. Moore mentioned, February 27th, Black History Program that him and myself will be a part of. I'm super excited about that. The staff sent me a link, I want to say, two days ago, with a video that was super inspiring and got my mind running because I asked them, like, what should I talk about? And they said, yourself, of course, and then we're going to send you a video that sparked a lot of things. So I'm super excited about that. So that's what I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Romero.
I'd like to share some updates regarding Twin Towers. Last week, Mr. Matt Bennett, a motivational speaker, visited the scholars at Twin, where the scholars had an amazing time. As they engaged deeply, made meaningful connections, and shared their thoughts and emotions, his powerful message challenged them to persevere and never give up, and he left a very lasting impact. As we honor Black History Month, Twin continues to celebrate and highlight the contributions of African history makers throughout lessons and activities. They're looking forward to the upcoming in-house Black History Month Assembly, where they will continue to recognize and uplift the rich history and achievements of the Black community. And lastly, the scholars are being encouraged to learn about the heart and how to keep it healthy. February is the American Heart Month. So as part of a fun and informative competition, scholars have the challenge, or they have been challenged, to find facts about the heart in and around the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Romero. Pastor Williams.
Well, good evening, everybody. Let me start out by saying this. When we talked about Mr. Perino and, and Mr. Williams talked about Mr. Carter. So I, I am grateful I had the experience of Mechanics Town at the time. And even though I never had the experience of the paddle, I did have the experience of the School as a Feeling Program, being a part of that, and, and also getting in the ring with some boxing gloves back in the day. I do want to make sure I clarify, I never lost. But nevertheless, nevertheless, I digress. There's so much that we can talk about. This is being Black History Month, and I, I have had the opportunity to travel all over the globe and all over the world, every, almost every major city I've had the experience in my lifetime to be able to, to be able to travel to and to be able to see things. And so I always make it my business, even with my children growing up, to, to make sure that they understand not just history, but in general, but also where, where we as African-Americans, Black, whatever you want to say, where we fit in. There's a couple of pictures, a couple of things, if you could put them up on the screen. Keep moving. We'll come back to that one. Keep going, keep going. We'll come back, come back, keep, right there. My wife is from Little Rock, Arkansas. Many times I've visited this location. This is the, the great iconic Central High School in Little Rock, Arkansas. In 1957, 1957, Central High School was the place where we saw the first integration of education after the 1957 landmark decision by the Supreme Court that segregation in our schools based on race or ethnicity was illegal. And so often I have had the opportunity to go there, and just to stand on the grounds is absolutely inspiring. It's become so iconic, if you could move to the next picture, please. It's become so iconic that they, the surrounding grounds have become very historic, and they memorialize that experience of those years. Little Rock Central High School's National Historic Site Visitor Center, which is literally on the next block. If you could go forward, go forward one more time. Again, there's a close-up of, of the Little Rock Central High School. One more, please. The next one, no. Is, is there another one that I sent? Is that there? No, no, no. Okay, one more. And then we'll come, nah, never, next one, next one. We'll talk about that. Next one, one more. There we go. There we go. That is a very historic, iconic picture of the things that these nine Central Park, Central High School nine experienced as they were attempting to move into Central High School. I think it's so important in these seasons that we do not forget what people have endured for us to be able to enjoy the freedoms and the rights that we have. Now, real quick, in my last 44 seconds, those other pictures that you saw, we don't have to go back to them. I have had the opportunity in my position as the Area Nine Director in the last two weeks to travel to DC and to travel to Albany to advocate for education. That's me in front of Representative Patrick Ryan's office, being on Capitol Hill, meeting with different politicians, advocating for education, advocating for the things that impact our community. I am honored and humbled. That is the, that's the State Building in Albany, and this is where I spent the last couple of weeks, last week in DC. I'm just returning today from Albany. And so I'm grateful to have the opportunity to be able to advocate. This is a passion of mine, and I will continue to fight it. Stick around for the roundtable. I'm going to shake the boat a little bit.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Pastor William. Ms. Avila, it's your turn.
Hi. So we have, for the community, 16 or 13 girls going to Mount St. Mary for Section Nine. Hopefully, we win because it's either first or second place that are able to go to state in February 27th, up in MVP in Albany. Yes. From there, we have Diamonds and Pearls Event that was canceled yesterday due to weather, rescheduled on March 18th at 6:00 PM in the high school. You can join, being the grades of six to 12, fun night, food, financial literacy. And thank you, Ms. Ramos, for your leadership with these events. As well as that, we had the, this week, we had the Diversity Club and BSU selling tickets for, because of whether, it was supposed to be yesterday, but went back, changed back, moved back to Monday, which is, no, Tuesday, February 18th. Yes. Watching the movie Let It Shine because Black Student Union, they want to have like a community between everyone. What else? I think just, oh, oh, yes. We have also Scholar-Athlete Team Award Celebration being on Thursday, February 27th, 2025, at 3:00 PM at MHS Main High School. Team Awards and Individual Awards will be recognized. Parents are encouraged to attend. And from that, I also have, with like some, certain situations that is happening now, some people are just scared and all with like ICE. I've, with the teacher, I've been giving out cards that have the Constitution and that, amendment rights that we have to, like, if they get knocked, if ICE comes to the door, they are able to know and speak out and not be afraid to like say what they know their rights are as citizens or illegal citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Thank you. Good evening. I just first want to congratulate the winter graduates. Excellent job in completing. Next up, just want to- Next up, just want to congratulate Norma for being a part of this board. And thank you, Ed, for facilitating the committee to get on this board. So important for our voice to be here. And I know it's just going to be great, it'll make things a lot better. That's it.
Awesome, thanks. Yeah, we, you know, Pastor Williams showed that picture of that high school student. You know, for so many years, we shortchange our students about having a voice and getting them ready for the world. And I think they're up to the challenge, we just have to give it to them. So, moving on, for mine, I may actually go a little bit longer, not much longer. But nevertheless, first, I want to do, I do want to thank our gentleman who provides our security here for our board meetings, Mr. Jose Sanchez. If you all know, we've highlighted his son, US Figure Skater from, who, that's okay. He's a student at Valley Central, but that's okay. He's one of our own with his dad working for our institution. So a couple of weeks ago, I think it was two weeks ago, he performed at his first US National, I think, right? His first US National. Before that, it was the Junior Olympics. He won the gold medal a few weeks before that at the Junior Olympics. And, you know, he's 17 years old and next year, I believe, will, the US National Team will be picked for the Olympics, I think in '26, if that's correct. And so, you know, he's got a pretty good opportunity. So in his very first US National, I watched it on, I think it was Peacock or Paramount, one of those others. But I watched it and this kid hit every single jump, was going great. And you can tell he was so excited at the end that he just forgot one little footwork at the end, and that cost him some points. But even the announcer said, this is the kid you got to watch moving forward in US men's figure skating. And that even the announcer said, I think he got so excited about the fact that he nailed all his jumps that he forgot a little bit of footwork at the end. So he ended up finishing sixth in his first US National, only three spots away from, that is. So I came to the table today, Mr. Sanchez said, oh, there's a little something for you at the table. And it's an autographed picture of him from the event along with a US National Team pen. So thank you very much, God bless, good luck. I will say, I will say that a few days afterwards, I was awoken at about 5:00 AM by my cell phone. And when I looked at the cell phone, I had gotten to bed that night and I knew there was an airplane accident down in Washington DC. And didn't think anything of it, went to bed and about 5:00 AM, my phone went off. And when I look at it, I saw the CNN breaking story that many of the passengers were a part of the US figure skating team. And I panicked that night. Woke up my wife, I'm like, I even sent a text to the superintendent. I'm like, please check on Mr. Sanchez. I sent him an email, which thankfully, an hour later, he said, we came home two days ago by the grace of God. He did mention to me that unfortunately, they knew many of the people on the plane. And that's a tough thing for a 17-year-old to now have to go through, any 17-year-old. So prayers to all of those involved and continued success to Jacob as well. And then moving on, first, I do want to congratulate all of our winter sports teams. Good luck to the Girls Varsity Basketball Team. They have Senior Night next Friday, and after that, it'll be the Section Nine Playoffs. And it's probably going to be them and Pine Bush again at the end. So hopefully, they can pull it off and make it into states. Good luck to the wrestlers, both the boys who have their matches in Section Nine on Saturday at Monroe Woodbury. And the young ladies who have their match at Mount St. Mary College on Monday. And our swimmers who have their sectionals also next week at Valley Central. I'm going to go over time, so that's okay. Prohibitive, president's prohibitive today. And then congratulations to our winter graduates. Fifteen winter graduates, 14 of the 15 are early graduates. So congratulations to them moving forward. And one of our messages that evening was, you know, I'm not a big fan of commencement speeches. I mentioned that at the graduation because it's typically old people getting up, talking about the past. And you lose interest, I think, when you're a graduating senior. So we wanted to make their address about the future a little bit and to give them some hope. And one of the things we did, if you guys can play our great tech crew, a couple of videos of two individuals that we showcased along with other individuals who are Middletown alum, who have done some great things recently. And this is Dylan Ortiz, who graduated in 2017 from Middletown. And he's escorting the First Lady at inauguration. And he just graduated here in 2017, was part of the NJROTC program, was on the baseball team. His coach, Mr. Hasbrook, wanted me to make sure that I gave him a shout out. And he's opened his arms to come back here and address some of our students and hopefully march sometime and maybe talk to the NJROTC. So congratulations. And then our most recent grad, who's right here in the outer lane, a gentleman by the name of Aaron Williams. Some of you may know, this is his first race. He graduated in June from our stage here at Middletown. His first race as a representative of Dominican College. And as you see him come around the corner, you will see that he will win his first race in college after graduating from Middletown just about eight months ago. So congratulations to both of them. And we showed that at the winter graduation to show the kids that were graduating that these are folks that just went across the same stage that you're going across tonight. And so hopefully...
Mr. Strata, just not to interrupt you, but I just do want to say this. Aaron has already, I'm a proud dad, I can be that, right? Aaron's already broke Dominican speed records in his first two track meets. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
That's great. I mean, we also mentioned Aaron Tavet, who graduated in 2001. We mentioned Micah Villas, who played for the Boston Red Sox and the Kansas City Royals, graduated in 1999. And then four females, we highlighted, my daughter was one. But Anaya Williams, Mr. Mitchell Williams' daughter, who is down at Hampton right now and who just finished an internship at Harvard in Boston as well. Along with Jasmine Martinez, who graduated in 2017 and is a police officer for the Charlotte Police Department. And we also did Marcano, Ally Marcano, graduated in 2016. And she works as a graphic designer for the Buffalo Bison, the AAA team for the Toronto Blue Jays. So our middies are everywhere and our middies are doing great things. There are attorneys, there are lawyers, there are doctors, there are electricians, there are plumbers, there are everything. They're out there, so be on the lookout.
I want to give my son...
And your son, Marcus Redd, who has given right back.
Marcus Redd, 2014 graduate, four-star basketball player at Alfred State. And now he is a crisis intervention teacher at Mon Hagan High School, Mon Hagan Middle School.
Give him back to the very school district.
Maple Hill Elementary.
Maple Hill. And we can't forget Ms. Romero's daughter, who's NYPD recently. So everybody doing great things from Middletown. And so that's the message we wanted to give to that graduating class. And hopefully, the message will give to our summer grads as well. Yes, Mr. Perino?
Before we move on, I think we have to give a lot of credit also to the parents. I know Mr. Sanchez, Mrs. Sanchez and Williams, John Williams, Mitch Williams, Kurt. You have to keep your children on track. And this is important, whether it be sports or whether it be scholastics and so on. People talk about the, I may say something about this in roundtable, reading scores. We have so many good instructors in this, but it's up to the parents to continue the instruction at home. And this is it. So I give a lot of credit to you folks who, around the table, and our parents, and who are all encouraging the students to do very well.
Absolutely. And then finally, on my Maple Hill report. Maple Hill had a bunch of events. I think I was at Maple Hill three or four times in one week. I think I beat Ms. Romero's Twin Towers record, but nevertheless. So if we can go back, one of them was Too Good for Violence Ceremony with the Middletown Police Department. Chief Awanchu, along with some of the officers, were there. A great turnout, both the parents and the students. There's Chief Awanchu doing the presentation. And our students are so engaged, it's unbelievable. If you ever get an opportunity, go on out there, the smile's worth a thousand dollars at least. And, you know, our parents enjoyed it as well. And then it finished up with our honoring our stars of Maple Hill. Principal Driscoll and her staff does an outstanding job. And this is what they wanted to do, which this award ceremony was to focus on the positive. They said, you know, and this is, you know, going back to what Norma's representing, was they got feedback from some of the elementary school students, it's like, why is everybody always highlighting the bad kids? You know, somebody does something bad, everybody knows about it. But nobody knows something when you're doing something good. So the teachers nominated students throughout the last quarter. There you have some of the scholars in each of the grades, there was a whole bunch of them. This is the week of November 25th, and it goes on and on and on. And as we go through this, you're going to see a great presentation that they did at Maple Hill, where they highlighted each and every student, the parents were there. They got a photo op in front of the midi board as well. And here are some of the students, along with what they did, that was part of their nomination that they did. So I promised that I would bring them all out here. I believe there's 57 students, you might have to sit here and just watch them all, 57. Because we're going to give them their just due because they deserve it. They work hard to get recognized by their respective teachers. As we continue to see, and for a variety of different reasons. It's, you know, you did something good today, today is your day. You see in the bag and some of the goodies that they got that morning over at Maple Hill. You know, learning and growing, demonstrates leadership qualities, works diligently. There's a variety of different ways. If those of you are familiar with the Sojourner Truth Awards that used to be given out over at the college, I don't know if they do that anymore. Yeah, they do. There's different categories that you can nominate different students for. So, did you recognize Zachary? There you go. There we go, okay. And, you know, all the different grades, again, it's just trying to set the tone positive in each of our school buildings. So congratulations to all of the students at Maple Hill. I look forward to heading down there again in the future. So thank you very much, that'll be my report. And now we'll move on to public participation, opportunity to address the board. The board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. And the public's not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking. And speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. And we also like to remind you to always make sure that you're civil when you're up at the microphone. And reading it in Spanish, Ms. Avila?
La junta deciraron un parte de su agenda de reunión para comentario públicos por un periodo de hasta 40 minutos. A cada persona le permitan más hasta cuatro minutos. No se permita al público discutir temas y o asuntos que involucran a una persona específicos. La personas de, espere, registra esta firma antes de hablar. Las personas no pueden ceder su tiempo a otras personas.
Thank you very much. And with that, if anybody would like to address the board, how are you, Dr. Johnson?
One for all, all for one. I invoked that sentiment at a recent meeting of the council. Different context, I was addressing the Gaza Gang, as I call them. But I offer you this sentiment this evening because I want to acknowledge that this community benefits greatly from the collaboration of municipal government and the public education system. As examples, I cite the ongoing communication between the soup and the mayor, Middletown Police Department, SROs, the schools. You fed into my segue of Chief Awanchu at the school that day. Collaboration between Park and Rex and Food Services. These are all things that we benefit from. The council has two pretty serious issues before it at this time. And they both, in most opinions, they both may disproportionately affect the Latino community. Your recent demographics suggested that 70% of your students at the high school are Latino. And the issues we're going to talk about may affect this population because it may find itself targeted, it may find itself marginalized, and it may find itself compromised in the basic rights to which they're entitled as residents and citizens of this country. Issue number one, and I've given you a handout, a two-pager. Issue number one is the issue of good cause eviction. The council is going to be holding a public hearing on March 4th. The mayor has put out a document that states this hearing is an opportunity for you to share your thoughts, experiences, and concerns about tenant protections, rent increases, and the future of fair housing in the city. Why this matters, advocacy group point of view. Good cause eviction protections are designed to prevent arbitrary evictions, excessive rent hikes, while ensuring that landlords can still remove tenants for non-payment or lease violations. Without these protections, many renters face uncertainty, displacement, and financial hardship. Point of view from the landlord. Landlords often oppose good cause eviction because they argue it restricts their ability to manage their properties effectively, resulting in less investment in housing, limiting landlords' ability to respond to market conditions. So we're having this meeting on March 4th as part of our regular meeting. We encourage all who are interested to attend. We're anticipating a pretty good turnout. Those who advocate for good cause have been meeting, have been coming to our meetings quite frequently over the last three or four months. And if you cannot attend, you're welcome to comment. And you can contact Rick McCormick at 845-346-4166. The district clerk, excuse me, the city clerk, force of habit, with respect to how you might comment. Issue number two, as we all know, it involves, and our student has spoken to it, it involves the impact of recent policies of the federal government with respect to immigration in this country. The mayor addressed this quite extensively at our last meeting. An interesting group had met with him, I happened to be in that meeting prior to the meeting. As you all know, there's a lot of unrest and concern as far as what's going to happen? How is it going to happen? What are my rights? What am I allowed to do and what is somebody else not allowed to do? So at the end of that meeting last week, or two weeks ago, I offered the following resolution, which was adopted unanimously. Be resolved that the common council of the city of Middletown, in collaboration with the city administration, will enact and reinforce practices and policies that protect all of our residents' safety, well-being, and legal rights. So we wanted this group of people to understand that you cannot have any person go to your school, come into the building, and request the presence of a child. But the chief also pointed out, if papers are in place and if there's a warrant, then certainly the law takes precedence. ICE has already visited Middletown last week. They announced they were coming, but they were asking not permission, but just to let us know they would be there. Two per one, ejemplo two, one for all and all for one. I always appreciate your kind and courteous consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Where do I sign in? It's just this. Dr. Johnson, did you take the paper? No, 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 did you take the signing?
Did we? No.
Then it's not here.
It may have been, it might have been somebody else prior. We'll get you signed in afterwards, that's okay.
Okay.
Mr. Witt's going to bring over...
Dr. Johnson, you took my paper now.
All for one and one for all.
Guilty as charged.
Oh, you did, okay.
Ah, there it is.
Too bad, it's in 30 seconds, that's a move.
Okay. Ay, ay, ay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Vanessa. I actually graduated from Middletown High School and went through from Head Start up until elementary, middle school, and high school here in Middletown. I graduated in 2015, as I mentioned, and on October 15th, 2020, you passed a resolution condemning racism and affirming your commitment to fostering an inclusive and supportive school environment for everyone. Thank you. It was bold and necessary step toward creating a space where all students, regardless of their background, feel safe and welcome. And today, I'm here to ask that you take the next step to ensure safety and dignity of all our students and families within our community. When I was younger, it was actually taboo to discuss my family's legal status. We lived in constant fear of anyone finding out. I was worried that one day I would be opening the door to an empty house. I'm here today to express my strong support for the New York State Teachers Association's resolution. Some of you who work as a teacher and are part of the union may have already seen that resolution, where it basically protects our students, faculty, from these raids targeting our families, particularly those who are undocumented. It poses a severe threat, not only to the physical safety of our children, but also to their families, and it affects their emotional well-being and their ability to participate fully in the educational experience. We cannot and should not tolerate actions that jeopardize the rights and futures of our students and their families. I ask for your support in passing this resolution. I do apologize for the late notice of the copy of the resolution because I realize that some of you may not have it, so I ended up emailing it to you today. So you should find it in your emails. And my question to you all, and something that I might not get an answer to tonight, is, for the students that are scared, there are many students within our school district that have no legal status, is there a space for them to vent, to gather resources? Is this something that's available for them in a group setting, or is it something that's being done in private in their counselor's office? Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm gonna pass it off to Paula, who's gonna speak in Spanish, and I'm gonna interpret.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Paula Martinez.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Paula Martinez.
Soy madre de un estudiante de noveno y quinto grado.
I am a mother of two students of ninth and fifth grade.
Estoy aquí para hablar acerca de la resolución de la asociación de maestros del estado de Nueva York.
I'm here to speak in favor of the NICE resolution.
Y estoy aquí para pedirles a cada uno de ustedes que apoyen y aprueben esta resolución para que protejan a nuestros estudiantes, profesores, y miembros de la comunidad.
And I'm here to ask each of you to support and pass this resolution to protect our students, faculty, and community members.
Del daño causado por las redadas predatorias.
From the harm caused of the predatory raids.
Las redadas dirigidas a nuestras familias particularmente.
Raids targeting our families in particular.
Aquellas que son indocumentados.
Those who are undocumented.
Que representa una grave amenaza, no solo para la seguridad física de nuestros miembros de la comunidad.
That poses severe threat not only to the physical safety of our community members.
Sino también para el bienestar y emocional.
But also to their emotional well-being.
Y capacidad de participar plenamente en la experiencia educativa.
And their ability to fully participate in the educational experience.
En mi experiencia, mi hijo de noveno grado está pasando por una crisis emocional que a mí me preocupa.
In my personal experience, my ninth grader is going through an emotional crisis.
Porque desde que está pasando todo esto, él se preocupa por sus compañeros, por sus maestros, porque qué va a pasar en la comunidad.
Since this has started, he has been very concerned and worried about his classmates and people in the community.
Y bueno, para mí, yo les pido su apoyo para que nuestros estudiantes y toda nuestra comunidad esté segura.
And I'm here to ask for your support so that our students and communities are safe.
Muchas gracias.
We'll have a brief statement after everyone's been able to address the board.
Oh, and I just wanted to say, Norma, congratulations and thank you for what you're doing.
Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none. Did we have any letters? No letters. So, my statement will be brief. Definitely, first of all, thank you for bringing the resolution to our attention. I'm not sure if everyone here is aware of the resolution, but we'll definitely take a look at it and hopefully have something that we can address. I want to let our community know that this conversation has been had by board members and administration for at least six months. We saw this coming. So we have had conversations with our school attorneys, we have had conversations amongst ourselves, we've had conversations with administration on how we can react as a school district. Also, understanding that attention, public attention, widespread public attention sometimes is not necessarily the right answer, because many in our community don't want that attention on themselves at this point. So our job as a school district, when we have some more credible and realization of what the federal government's doing, and how it affects our specific community, when we have some additional clarity to that, we hope as a school district to communicate that back out to all of our parents. Whether that becomes a MIDI TV forum, or whether that's through our website, that will be had, hopefully sooner rather than later, for, to help allay some of the fears that are out there. We understand that, believe me. We're a very diverse group, as you can see. We're very attuned to what's going on in our community. And so our job is to make sure that we help the community out as best we can within the legal ramifications and what we're allowed to do legally. I will tell you that I even told my wife, and I've told this story to everybody up here, I even told my wife, you might need to bail me out in the future. So, you know, we feel very strongly about, and we're all pretty much on the same page. What I can tell you is that if there are any family members out there who are very concerned, who are, really want to have a sit-down with somebody to discuss what their rights are, what a reaction would be from the school district if they're concerned in that regard, please contact our superintendent of schools, Amy Creedon, and she will put together a team in response, whether it's social workers or counselors, as well as how the district would react to anything specifically. I don't want to say anything publicly yet because I don't wanna bring unnecessary attention to any families in our community right now. Right now is about trying to get as much information out to our family on how they can react and what their rights are, as Ms. Avila pointed out earlier today. I don't know if Ms. Creedon wanted to add anything to that statement from an administrative standpoint.
No, just that we take the health, safety, and well-being of all of our young people very seriously, and feel proud of the practices and protocols we have in place to ensure that our young people, you know, are safe inside of our buildings. And if anybody has concerns, that they can reach out to me through my office or send me an email, I'd be happy to set up either a phone call, an in-person meeting, or a virtual
Mr. Perino?
I, from National School Boards on this whole issue, I was going to report a little bit on it, on workshops, if you'd like me to do that.
Yeah, if you want to do that now, I think it'd be...
That'd be fine.
Given that it's on people's minds.
Yeah. Now, you have to understand when we do this, that it's very fluid, okay? As President Rostada mentioned. But this is 2025, just a week or so ago, on this, okay? And you have to go back, when you're discussing this whole immigration issue, you have to go back to 2011. And in 2011, the Department of Homeland Security created a policy that prohibited agents from entering and engaging in immigration arrests in what were deemed protected and sensitive areas. And that included schools, places of worship, playgrounds, colleges, care centers, hospitals, and other community centers. That's 2011. However, January 20th, 2025, and this is how recent this workshop is, the Trump administration, and I'm not getting political here because we're a non-political board, okay? I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you what this, what was presented in the workshop. The Trump administration rescinded the, that memo, and updated the designated sensitive areas, and issued a new directive. Under this, schools, along with all the other previously designated sensitive areas, were no longer off limits for immigration enforcement operations, no longer off limits. So as I say, this is evolving very, very rapidly. I believe the, I contacted some of the legislatures, and I was told that the director of ICE, Mr. Hallman, Tom Hallman, said that the agents were not going into schools. Whether or not, I don't know. Now, can an ICE agent enter, now enter, schools? That's the question. The school board said, the, again, what was presented was possibly, they need a very specific type of warrant, or express permission to enter the areas that are not usually open to the public, such as K-12 schools. They need a judicial warrant that's issued by a judge. Both state and federal judges can issue, sign off on these, both federal and state. Judicial warrants enable the ICE officers, the ICE officers, to carry out arrest seizures and searches. If an ICE agent presents an administrative warrant, schools do not have to allow the ICE agent onto school property. So there's a difference. If the warrant carries an immigration judge's signature, or the signature of an ICE official, that is an administrative warrant. So it's a judicial warrant and an administrative warrant. So, if the ICE agent requests, makes that request, they advise school board, National School Boards Association, contact your school attorney immediately and get their names, badges, ID of the person requesting to get into schools. Do you want me to continue or not? Do ICE agents need a warrant for immigration enforcement? Yes, again, they do need this. They need a judicial warrant. If your school receives a warrant, again, immediately contact the officers, your attorneys. And I, I think we have great attorneys, and we have people, they have people on staff that are specializing in this now. Now, let's talk about undocumented children. Do public and elementary, elementary and secondary have a, schools have a constitutional duty to provide undocumented children with free education? Undocumented? Yes, that's a Supreme Court ruling, Filer versus Dole. That was in 1982. The undocumented children have a constitutional right on the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment to receive free public education through kindergarten, from kindergarten through 12th grade. Should a school district enroll an undocumented minor who is also unaccompanied? Again, yes. Now, this is a date of this publication, which was only, the publication of workshop, which was only a couple of weeks ago. The law does not permit a school to deny an undocumented student access to public education on the basis of he or she was, was unaccompanied. Now, going on with this, this is state and local law, state and local law, school officials may request proof that an adult-enrolling child lives in the district, and we do this. I mean, that's, that's common, that's been common as long as I remember. But you can ask about citizenship, immigration status of a child, or of the adults enrolling the, the child. So if somebody comes up and enrolls a child, you can ask very specific questions, but you can't ask about the immigration status. Now, what happens if an ICE agent requests student records? You want me to continue, you want me to go on next time?
Well, I think we could probably save that for a very extensive committee report.
Okay.
The more detail to it. I just want to make sure that we get the communication out to parents, that if they have any questions, that please contact the superintendent, because she's gonna have all of the knowledge from our school attorneys and things like that.
Just one more thing. The, what comes into play here is a FERPA law, federal law, the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act. And this law spells out how a district handles educational records. So there are protections, there are protections in place. So, we're not, we're not, we're not just going along here, okay? So, you know, we're concerned, but right now, about the kids in school, I would not get overly concerned because of what I've been saying and what I've been hearing.
I think a lot of the concern isn't necessarily the students in school, but also what's happening at home, and their fear for, for their families at home.
Yeah.
So, just very briefly, and then we'll move on, because we have a couple of presentations to be done.
Just quickly, John, that's very good information. We appreciate you really sharing it. It's a lot to disseminate, it's a lot to disseminate. And then, I think for the population that we have here, a lot, it needs a lot of translation because it's some real good pieces there of information. But for the most part, a lot of people probably don't quite understand a lot of the information that's being shared.
You'd be surprised. Go ahead, Pastor Williams.
Briefly in thirty, briefly, real brief, nothing happens by happenstance, nothing happens by happenstance. My position, the position that I hold, hold now with, with NISBA, has afforded me the opportunity to travel, to travel to Washington DC and to Albany. On last week, I was in, I was in Washington DC at the New, at the National School Boards Association Conference for Advocacy and Equity. And on last, on last Tuesday, we spent the entire day on Capitol Hill, meeting with our senators and with our congressmen, addressing these exact issues and other issues. So, you know, and then on Wednesday, on yesterday, in Albany, addressing these exact issues and other issues concerning, concerning our school districts. So, I want to just quickly, just co-sign with the report. I have, I have all that same information right here, right now, because this is on the radar. The National School Boards Association is diving directly into this. And so I just, I just wanted to add to that. This is not something that is local, this is national, and we are all on the radar. And I think that, I, I'm honored to be able to have the ability right now to tap into those national, national... those national, national veins and be able to bring that back to Middletown so that we can strengthen what we do here. So, thank you.
Appreciate that, Pastor Williams.
Did you discuss sanctuary schools?
I'm sorry?
Sanctuary schools?
Now, we're getting beyond what we want to talk about tonight, so we'll be
We'll, we'll talk about that.
We're going to move on. We, you know, the gist of all this is hopefully that everyone gets the communication, that we're, we've been on top of this for the last six months, trying to do as much as we can behind the scenes to make sure we get the communication out to our families, and we'll continue to do that in a very methodical way for this district, okay? So, in the meantime, step number one, if you have any concerns, any fear, you need support for your student at home or a family member at home, contact our Superintendent of Schools, and or your building administrator for one of the schools. We will find support for you one way or the other, guaranteed, that I can guarantee you. So moving on now to our superintendent updates, we have a couple of reports tonight. Ms. Creden, it's all yours.
Great, thank you. This evening, I'm going to invite Ms. Barbecura, our Director of Nurse Services, Nurse Practitioner, to the podium to give an update on strengthening our partnerships with Healthy Smiles and Rappaport Services for our elementary school scholars, dental health. Mrs. Curra.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, Board President Estrada, Board of Education Trustees, Superintendent Amy Creden, and Assistant Superintendent Camille Adoma. I'm thrilled to provide an update on the ongoing partnership between our district and Healthy Smiles dental team. As you recall, Healthy Smiles provides free and preventative healthcare in schools for children with prior parental consents. The first round of visits took place in November 2024 across our elementary schools. I'm pleased to report that the program was highly successful. During these visits, scholars received preventative dental care, including screenings, cleanings, fluoride applications, instructions on proper brushing technique. Additionally, some of the upper elementary scholars who have molar teeth received sealants to block cavities from forming. So at Maple Hill, we had 151 students whose parents signed consents, who had the preventative service done. Out of the 151, 55 were referred for further care. And this is 16% of the school population. So considering this is the first time Healthy Smiles came to our district, this is really good. Maple Hill Annex, we had 59 scholars, and 15 were referred. And the referral is based on issues, that dentists found cavities, more than one or two cavities, or student had issues with their gums or their tooth pain, the referral was made and the family was contacted by Health, by Healthy Smiles. Maple Hill Annex had 68% of all their students received care, which is amazing. Presidential Park, 171 students received care, and 72 were referred. And at William A. Carter, we had 98 students received care that day. The fun fact about this, that kids who were getting their teeth cleaned that day received sunglasses, and I have some pictures from, from that, a toothbrush and a squishy tooth. That was something they were very proud of, they wore their sunglasses for the rest of the day. And they were very excited to have that dental care. And, and that visit lasted, it was just one day for each school. And all these students were seen in that day. We had either two or three dentists or two or three dental chairs for the day from Healthy Smiles, and they were able to service everyone. We have been particularly impressed with Healthy Smiles team and how they tailored their approach to meet the needs of our elementary scholars, especially at Maple Hill Annex, where they were very mindful and accommodating of our sensory sensitive scholars. There's another, that's another couple of pictures. Healthy Smiles will be visiting our elementary schools again in May. Our goal is to see more scholars who will receive dental care in, for the first time, as well as provide six months follow for those who've been seen already in November. So we hope to have more consents signed, and if we do have more than 200 students to service, we'll have, we'll set up more days, we'll have at least two days in that school. And these are the dates for the upcoming visits. Presidential will be May 13th and 14th, Maple Hill Annex on May 15th, and William Carter, William A. Carter on the 20th, and Maple Hill Elementary on 27th and 28th. Additionally, I'm excited to announce that we're working to bring Healthy Smiles to our middle schools next year. We continue to see a strong connection between dental health and school attendance, which is why this program is so important for our scholars and our school community. Thank you for your continued support for this vital initiative. We look forward to keeping you updated on our progress, on the process and progress. Also, I want to thank you, thank the administrators of elementary schools as well, Ms. Creden and Mr. Mike Tuttle, who helped bring Healthy Smiles to our district, and our health team who made sure that dental visits ran smoothly.
That's awesome. I wish I got sunglasses when I went to the dentist. Does anybody have any questions? No, that's awesome. I look forward to the report for the spring visits.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still yours, Mrs. Creden.
Great, so now we're going to invite Mr. Smith up to the podium, and he is going to give us our annual financial outlook, revenues, expenditures, and fund balance.
Thank you. Each year, we seem to have a theme when we start the budget, budgeting process. And this year's theme, I think, is change, uncertainty, and confusion. Basically, we're at a point right now where there are a lot of dynamics going on, both on, at the state level, especially last year, we were talking about foundation aid. And with the foundation aids being brought up to levels that had been, you know, lobbied for, for over a decade, they finally did come. Then the next question was, once we've got the foundation aid, what are the formulas going to be that will determine how much of that aid is going to be distributed to individual districts? So we're at that point now on the state level where one of the major funding sources for schools is going to be discussed, and we're just starting to hear some of the proposals. The governor's executive budget has come forward, and there seems to be, actually, if some of those proposals go forward, it could be positive for Middletown schools in that there seems to be an emphasis on wealth, poverty levels, and, and populate, student populations, and whether those populations are growing or if they're decreasing. So Middletown is in that situation where when you look at the poverty levels of the district that have been computed, you're about in the 75 to 80 percentile that I could see as I was going through this, the exercise of trying to figure some of these proposals out, that that could be positive for future foundation aid. Also, the student population, unlike many other school districts in the state, has actually been very stable and even growing to a certain extent for some of the, some of the projections that are coming out for the future, which is going to be positive on some of those scorings under the aid also. Like I say, though, this is not, the governor's executive budget is just the first round, and that'll be going through the, the state and the assembly, and where those discussions will go, you know, nobody knows right now. On the federal level, as we all know, there's a lot of change, and it's coming very rapidly. And it's, it's, the exercise in trying to determine where, where money is being spent and how is a very worthy ideal. It almost reminds me, if any of you remember that movie Dave, where he brought the, the president that was stepping in for the president that was down in the basement, there, he brought his own personal accountant in to start looking at the federal budget, and they, he had a couple of programs that he wanted to see, and the challenge to him was to find the money. And this, this guy found, found the money enough to, to get those programs done. That's sort of an effort that's going on now, but we just got to hope that basically the Doge, Doge group doesn't do brain surgery with a chainsaw. It's, it's an honorable thing, but how is it done? And do they really understand, you know, the intricacies of government and what the effects are? That's to be determined, that's to be seen. And also, we're not hearing an awful lot from Congress right now, but I am sure over time that Congress will start looking at some of these proposals and putting their, their own spin on it and their own take on it. And we've already seen that the other branch of the government, the courts, are already involved. So we don't know where things are going. I had a tough time doing the projections and what the future years will look like this time around. I had to take a lot of time on it. But what I was able to come out with was that basically, the state had a very good year last year. So we're in a position, and, and actually, the governor has proposed some return of tax money to individuals because of some of the, some of the extra funds that have come into the state. So as the Budget Director Blake Washington stated in his technical briefing on the governor's budget proposal, "The state's fiscal health is quite sound. Personal income tax revenues have been strong, the stock, stock market returns were excellent, with over a 28% return," which that, the performance of the stock market determines what the bonus levels for Wall Street will be, and that in turn, when they're high, the state tax revenues come in very strong. And so that was another factor that was, had a very positive effect on the personal income tax collections. Overall, personal income has increased. Even in the lower wage levels, the personal income has increased around 5% for those personal income tax for the lower wage levels too. So there, there, there was a positive effect on all strata of, of the wage levels in the Next year's revenues are estimated to increase by about another 4.7 billion and, or another 1.3% to around $62.36 billion, then start decreasing modestly around 1.6% in fiscal years 26, 27. So we're not in a, in a bad time, but, but like I say, with what may be happening, both on the state level and the federal level, could have some impacts definitely on aid to education. One of the most recent things we've heard is, of course, what is the future of the Federal Department of Education? Some proposals have come out that it should be abolished completely, and then the, any savings that are realized would be taken, would be transferred to the states, for the states to use without a middleman. Depending on how that's done and what is actually rearranged, it could have a negative effect or it could have a positive effect on revenues. The other factor is because of New York State's high reliance on federal funds, especially in the area of, of Medicaid and the, and the effects that that could have on New York State's budget, could be very severe. As I've talked about this almost the last, I think, over eight years in the reports we've done, the Medicaid area in New York State is one that is, it's unsustainable. The growth rates are unsustainable, and something has to be done to address them. But the reliance, the thing that got the state through for the last four years to five years, was basically the extra federal aid that has come to the state in those areas. If that state, if that aid, and that, that's going to be a discussion in the coming session of Congress, is what is the future, because it's a pinch point on the national level also. What's happening now is the increase in Medicare, Medicaid, the increase in the national, the interest on the national debt, and, and the, and the need, at least what we're hearing is the need for increased defense spending. Those three areas crush out, they're, they're a constant strain on the discretionary parts of the federal budget. And they're going to get worse unless something isn't addressed. And even social security, to, to some extent, the future of that and the cost of that. So over the next, well, at least the next two years, because then there will be a midterm election where the Senate and the, and the, the Congress will be up for reelection. So for at least two years, there is this uncertainty of where we're going, and we're just going to have to, to go with the flow. The positive is, your district has set yourself up well for these challenges. Foundation aid, like I say, could be, could be in your favor through the formula changes. The other thing you've done is you've been, you've funded your reserves well, and you've, and you've got a healthy fund balance. Now, that could be a positive or a negative, depending on how this foundation aid comes out. Because as I read a lot of the budget messages, there's always this line put in there that there are many schools that have very healthy fund balances and have very healthy reserves. It's almost envy on the part of the state budget department, because they're, they're trying to put some money away for rainy days, but they're nowhere near what the outlier, the outlying years for budget deficits are. Over the next four years, there could be a combined state budget deficit of over $36 billion. One positive is, that's over a series of five years or so, California has that right now. So we're not, you know, we used to say, "Thank God for Louisiana," because of their financial health, now we can say, "Thank God for California." The other thing you've done is you've strategically planned your debt service in such a way that you've paid cash for many projects, and you're, you've been able to generate state aid that has a tail to it, and has not historically been fooled with by the state legislature, even when they're jiggling around formulas. So in your case now, because of the way that you have made significant down payments on your debt, and you're going to get that paid back with interest, the principal in interest will be over, most cases, 15-year period. will be over, most cases, 15-year period, although for the new school, it's over a 30-year period. But your tail is basically, for the foreseeable, almost 20, next 15 to 20 years, you're, you're gonna receive about $2,200,000 more in building aid than what your debt service is. So, you've, you've kind of further insulated yourself by being able to have a couple of million bucks that doesn't really get played with in all these state formula changes. So, it's very shrewd, what you've done, and to be able to take advantage of this is very rare. You don't see this happen in any school districts at all. The other thing that helps you out is your aid ratio is very high, so that, that, that is another factor that helps with generating this aid. So, you, you've taken on needed and necessary repairs, and when I heard about, you know, rehabbing the older school rather than building a new school, it's funny, I was just in another school district where it was the, one part of the school you walk into, the first part, was built during the WPA days. And basically, you know, the tarozzo floors still shine, and I was in a school district where we had, this school district had done a capital project about 10 years ago. And when you go into that one, the floors were starting to crack, you could actually see, there's not the quality of workmanship that, that went into those old schools that you see happening now. So, I think you made a wise, a wise decision. If you can take an existing school and make it work, and rehab it, you're gonna be much farther ahead than if you went out and tried to build that new school. And the aid ratios are not as good on a new construction as using a repair and rehabilitation. So, this district has set it up self, itself up well to weather the storm. Keep an eye on that, that discussion about, oh, you've got these heavy reserves and fund balances. Don't spend it, you know, don't go out and have a field day, but be aware of that so that there might be some programming of appropriated fund balance to say, and that's why you have a multi-year plan. When they come in and start digging you, you'll say, "No, we have thought about this, and this is why we're doing what we're doing." So, you're defensive, but you're proactive at the same time. That's one of the things I wanted to get across. The other factor, and we do have preliminary state aid runs on page 15 of the report, which shows under the foundation aid formula, Middletown's overall aid will go up about So, those are the preliminary numbers. It's a pretty good, you know, historically, we start with the governor's budget, and then historically, the legislature has added more on, on it from there. But again, we don't know, that's where this confusion is, is once it starts getting into that sausage-making of the state budget, what will, what will come out of the other end as far as how these foundation aids are actually delivered? We don't, just don't know right now. But you're starting off from a pretty good point. There are a number of, quite a few districts are actually slated to, under the first runs, to lose aid. What we're hearing now is there'll probably be some sort of a hold harmless for those districts that would, under the new formulas, would lose aid. And, and this has been an issue, because the formulas are using data that's about two decades old. So, it has no reflection on what is actually going on now in the districts. Now, if they bring these, if they start bringing in more up-to, up-to-date data, there will be shifts, and there will be districts that, that they're gonna say, "You can meet the mandate of educating your pupils without our help." So, chances are, there's, hold harmless was always, everybody, you didn't get any less, and then you got more. Under the new proposal, it might be, "This is what you're supposed to get," under our new formulas that have been brought up to date. This is more reality of what's going on in your district, but you're gonna get at least maybe 2% or something like that, kinda tied back to the tax cap. That probably, something like that is probably what's gonna occur, but like I say, God only knows. The other thing I wanted to bring up was that the cost of education in New York State, and this is something that has really got to be addressed. We, we are more than double the national cost per pupil as what, what the costs in New York State, or what we're spending in New York State to educate a pupil versus the other, the other states in the nation. And it's pretty sobering when, when you really look, and, and then you gotta compare that to what are your results? They're not, they're not 50% better than the nation. So, we have to start looking at and getting inside the numbers, foundation aid is one of the first things probably, but the mandates that are being put on school districts without any local input or control. You know, Eisenhower talked about a military-industrial complex when he left. We have a state education complex in New York State. We have so many vested interests that are, are, are moving these costs that you have no control over. There has to be some hard discussions, if nothing else, for all those school districts across the southern tier that have lost 30% of their student population. Why are they not looking at central high schools or something to try, you know, if you go to Carolina's, one superintendent for 20-some school districts, 30 school districts? We've got to start having those discussions, and I don't know if that'll happen in this, I'm not real optimistic that those discussions will happen, and I'm not optimistic that the state will give up their authority from top-down and let schools percolate from bottom-up as far as decision-making from the school boards. But something's gotta happen. We are, I just wanted to, starting on page nine, and I don't wanna go into a lot of this, but as you read it over, pay some, look at this closely. For the 2025-26 Executive Budget Proposal, $37.4 billion for school aid is gonna increase 4.7%, inclusive, inclusive of a 1.5 billion, 5.9% foundation aid increase. In addition, the executive budget provided $340 million for universal free school meals, $160 million, 89% year-to-year increase in that area. And it's important to keep in mind that on a per-pupil basis, New York spends almost double the national average, $29,873 per student versus $15,633, and approximately 19% higher than the second-ranked New Jersey expenditures. And New Jersey, you know, has one of the highest tax rates in the nation also. The results, like I say, don't show that we're 50% better because of that investment. Schools in Virginia and some of the other states through that, Maryland, schools are performing better at a lower cost. How, now, put on top of that, that continually larger and larger snowball that's rolling down the ski slope of Medicaid, increased Medicaid costs, something's gotta give somewhere. Because the other problem is the population that we're losing in New York State. And the problem on top of that is, the population we're losing, a large percentage of them are the more highly compensated employees and workers. The higher income are losing this, are moving from the state. Well, that can go on for only so long. I, you know, I always joke, New York State is losing the battle of where to live at the picnic table. Because when the people come back from the, to the family reunions, and they've moved to Tennessee, they've moved to North Carolina, they've moved to South Carolina, they talk about their property tax. And they're living in a $400,000 house, and they're paying $3,000 in real property tax. That's where we're losing that battle. We're losing the battle at the picnic table. And when they come home for Thanksgiving, when they come home for Christmas, and everybody looks at each other and say, "What the hell are we doing?" So, your district is doing a very commendable job. You're setting yourself up defensively for if you are gonna get criticized for what you're, because you've got and have planned fund balances, you've funded your reserves, you've been prudent, you've got your long, you've got, you're doing the long-range planning. You can show, I mean, in here, if we don't do anything, we're projecting you would need like a 17% tax rate increase by, you know, the final year of our, of our long-range budget. But you don't. I mean, every year, I, I come in with a, we seem to settle between 15 and 20-some percent needed increase on the out-years when you do these budgets, budget projections. But that's why we do these budget projections, because the board can understand the challenges that are facing them and the adjustments that have to be made. And you've done rightsizing, and you've, you've done a lot of work to get to where you are. One of the other things is, you've traditionally have tapped into federal funding. That could be another thing on the horizon. Like I say, it could be a pro, it could be a con, depending on what happens with federal funding streams. But I just wanna say, you're doing a very good job. You've, you're fiscally strong, and you're doing that planning that many districts don't really take the time or are as astute as what you've been able, this board has been able to be.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll go around the table. Mr. Moore, any questions? No? Mr. Perino.
I believe, and you've been on, just about on the money every year, and a lot of the budget really is, is due to Mr. Tuttle and his department and the administrative staff. He always manages to pull a couple rabbits out of the hat and give a low, lower tax, low tax levy, which is appreciated in this district, being it's not a wealthy district. As you point out in one of your, in the appendix of one of the tables, actually, the family, family income, I think, was $74,000 and change, which is below the, the county and is below the state. So, even more commendable on that. It's not a rich district. There are, there are areas which are very wealthy, but then again, it's not the norm in this district. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Rapp.
Enjoyed your presentation. Again, I liked the projections. It looks very positive for us right now, and it's good foresight, as you said, to just be able to look at and just kinda get a feel of what we see now and how it pertains to the future and how numbers will be looking depending on the various adjustments in, in the department, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Mr. Bison.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bison. Mr. Freddie Fo, I said Freddie Fox.
Yeah.
Freddie Williams.
No questions, more of a comment. Just thank you for your presentation, very informative.
Thank you, Freddie. Mr. Romero.
No questions. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Pastor Williams.
Thank, thank you, Jeff, for, for always coming, coming through for us and giving us this information. You know, something you said about, something you said about the, you know, the way that we've set up, I think that is something that we ought to applaud the current administration, but we also ought to applaud previous administrations, because they followed in suit down through the years. We could not be here if not for what had already been established, and so, we're grateful for that foundation. Something that Mr. Perino just said that really triggered, triggered something in me, because one of the things that I've experienced in the, the last two weeks, or the last week or so, or I should say, the last day or so, is someone saying, "Well, well, we could do that, too, if we had Middletown's money." And I said, and I tried to, and what I think, we're not a rich district. We are not a risk, rich district. We just know how to manage what we have. And that's important.
Pastor Williams, you're doing what we knew would be very instrumental by you being so active on the state level. You should be able to have some input into those discussions as that sausage is being made. And, and so, being proactive, that's one of the things that we had recommended for the board, and, and by you doing that, that, that's very important and to be commended. In the past administrations, Dr. Eastwood and Betsy McKean were also very strategic, and, and that built a base that was able to be able to do this longer. A lot of, what they were doing was thinking, they were thinking way down the road, and remember when he went out and actually tried to get other federal funding to supplement? When we went through those very, very hard state aid reductions and, and shifts, by, he was able to backfill some of that with some of that federal aid. That's why we'll have to watch very closely what's going on in Washington right now and how that comes out.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Mr. Veale, any questions?
I think so.
No? Okay, that's okay.
No questions. Thank you for presentation.
Sure thing.
I'll be brief, because my vice president wanted me to make sure I was gonna be brief, but just two things. One is, is I have to put something out there, 'cause you almost sounded like our former esteemed governor, Andrew Cuomo, who I have always had a problem with in regards to when he complains about the per-pupil costs in the state of New York. People should understand, there's a story behind that, and the story behind it is that we consider ourselves a compassionist state. And with that compassion comes a lot of money. And the difference between our general education costs and our special education costs are markedly different in New York State. As I've mentioned before, the binder on special education laws in New York State is about this thick. We can drive 14 miles down the road to the state of Pennsylvania who adhere only to the federal standards, and their binder is this big. And that difference in special education was what drives up our per-pupil costs. Our general education per-pupil costs are slightly higher than the national average, but nowhere near the number that's noted on here. So, the question becomes is, what do you want to be to your special education students? What do you want to be to your ELL students, of which New York has abundantly more as far, as far as their student population's concerned compared to the state of Oklahoma or compared to the state of Kansas? Do we inherently have way too many school districts? We have 700 school districts. The state of North Carolina has about 60 or something. Whatever many counties they have, that's how many school districts they have. But they're also new states. We have old infrastructure. We're an old state. You know, so, with that comes obviously increased costs. Does that mean that it has to be that way? No. Does that mean that the tough choices need to be made by the folks up in Albany? Yeah, but it's the folks in Albany who complain about the per-pupil costs, but they're the ones who gave us the per-pupil costs. Governor Cuomo used to argue and fight with the public education system every year about budgeting, and his caveat that he would throw out there constantly was, "Well, we pay more per-pupil than any other state in the country." Yeah, but you did that. We didn't come up with these costs. They came up with the regulations on special education. They came up with the regulations and all the unfunded mandates, and that's what we have to live with. So, the change has to be done in Albany. They don't have the political willpower to do it. I could fix it if I was governor and serve only one term, because that's all the, the governor would be able if they made the really hard decisions that need to be made in Albany. But they don't wanna do that, because they want their political power. So, I don't think it'll get done. It'll be a lot of, you know, shell game back and It'll be a lot of, you know, shell game, back and forth. I think the federal government issue, okay, it's a problem for the next four years. Right? So unless you subscribe to the conspiracy theorists that the existing administration wants to stay in office forever and ever and ever, they've only got three and a half years left, and then we have a new administration. And what does that mean? And I think we saw it when the president tried to do the freeze on grants and aides, and that executive order lasted a couple of days when they realized that the state of Utah, one-third of its revenue came from federal grants. Well, it's a red state. So all of a sudden, that executive order wasn't as serious as the other ones. So things will get ironed out, you know, the elimination of the Department of Education, which is their next mantra. Well, they're going to find out that a lot of states that were supportive of this administration rely on a lot of federal funding for their education. So all of a sudden, that'll start to change. So I'm not a big subscriber on that everything's going to end up being the way it is. We have been steadfast in this organization for the last 20, at least 21 years. From the previous, beginning with Dr. Eastwood, who was pretty smart at the fiscal responsibility of the school district. And every leadership that we've had has done an outstanding job in staying the course. The only other last thing I'll mention is that what makes us different in Middletown compared to the southern tier or any other areas of the state, we're pretty much the only school district between Albany and New York City that has enrollment increases. Pretty much the only one. So my concern is that, yeah, the foundation aid increase looks slightly better for us, is that that's balanced out by the fact that we have enrollment increases that nobody else is experiencing. Definitely not in the Hudson Valley and probably from anywhere north of Westchester County. So I wanted, you know, when we went around and we were lucky enough to have a, an audience with, I forgot the gentleman's name, who was in charge of the foundation aid formula study, but he invited several school districts. We were one of them, who were represented about giving our feedback on how that process was moving along. And we mentioned about the fact that, you know, where, where's the voice for the few school districts who are having enrollment increases? How do you fund that? You know, I don't think I ever got a great answer to that because, truth be told, 95% of our districts are not having enrollment increases. So it's not an issue for them, but it is an issue for us. And so whatever foundation increases we have from a percentage standpoint has to be balanced out with the fact that we are a growing school district. We're busting at the seams here at this building, as, as well as throughout the other district. When I first joined the school board in 2020 and 2003, we were the third largest school district and almost the fourth because Pine Bush was about to overtake us. And now we are strong position number two behind Newburgh, and we continue to grow and they continue to hemorrhage student population. So, truth be told, a lot of this belongs, this problem belongs in Albany. I've said that for the last 20 some odd years, and I'll continue to say that, but there's going to be no willpower to change it up there. There's just too much lobbying going on. Another suggestion I made, and I apologize Mitch, but I'm going to roll. I've talked to our legislators about the fact that I don't understand why 70% of our cost is personnel-related, right? We have, the teachers are part of the state retirement system. So to me, they should belong to part of the state. That should be the state's obligation, just like New York State troopers. And what that would do is level the playing field in regards to salary structures, let's say. Because in honesty, for us to attract teachers, we got to go up against Westchester and Rockland County who have exorbitant costs as far as how their salary structures are. They're going up against New York City, who's going up against Long Island, who has probably the highest teacher salaries in the entire country. And so there's an inherent escalation, right? Because we want to attract teachers here. And in order to pay them, you know, we have to make sure we're paying them so they're not commuting to Westchester, Rockland and the city. Mr. Rep can attest to that, right? So I mean, but there's no willpower to do that in Albany. And until that happens, then it costs belongs to the local taxpayer and it belongs to us here. And we've done an outstanding job of doing it. I am concerned, no doubt about the federal government, but I think that too shall pass eventually, hopefully. Knock on wood. So that's my two cents. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the effort that you make each and every year coming down here to give the presentation to our district.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I appreciate doing this. And like I say, you know, you're, you're my favorite school board.
Thank you.
Ms. Creedham.
Thank you very much for giving me time this evening to provide the board and school community with a mid-year update on superintendent's hearings. So just want to give a quick snapshot of where we're at right now. Our total student enrollment is about 7,400 scholars. And what you can see here up on the board is the demographic breakdown of our district right now at this time. Approximately 92% of our scholars identify as people of color. Approximately 20% of our scholars identify as special education, and 17% of our scholars identify as English language learners. And just to amplify the statement that President Estrada was making, that while our sister school districts across the county are experiencing enrollment declines, our enrollment continues to remain stable. But what is growing is not necessarily the number of students that we're serving. We're pretty stable there and have been for the last four to five years. What is growing rapidly is the percentage of ENL students, and our special education students are growing steadily too. So those are our high-cost aid students. So when other districts are losing enrollment, ours is remaining stable, but the cost to educate those high-cost aid students is where we rely on that aid. So what our district did last year was began to engage at our own, you know, decision with the New York State Education Department's TACTI Center. We engaged with them because we were reviewing our own suspension data and felt that we were trending towards a potential identification. We were at risk of identification. So after we spent a year doing work voluntarily with the TACTI team, we really began to dig into data in a different way. And so we were anticipating that our special education scholars would be identified based on our own data review. And what they do is you're always one year behind in your data review based on what you submit to the New York State Education Department. So in late winter, January 30th to be exact, we were officially notified that based on the previous year's suspension data, year 2324, we were identified as disproportionately suspending special education students who are black males. So what you see on the screen here in front of you is the total pool of scholars that are in that category. So there are 343 black male scholars in the category special education. And because 14 scholars were suspended for 10 more days, that put us at exceeding the state's allotment for a suspension percentage. So we become officially identified. So after you are officially identified, the New York State Education Department partners with you, and they begin a comprehensive review of your policies, practices, procedures, your development of IEPs, your use of positive behavior interventions, your procedural safeguards. And then they do an individual data review of student portfolios. And so we are just starting that process because our official identification just happened only a few short weeks ago. And so we have just partnered officially with our agent from the New York State Education Department, Ms. Sinclair, who will bring us through this process. But because we anticipated that we were going to be identified based on our voluntary work the year prior, we had already begun what we knew would need to be done in order to bring us closer to reducing the amount of out-of-school exclusionary suspensions for So what you can see here is I did a poll of our suspension data for, since right now we're only at the January point in time, I didn't want to compare year to year because it wouldn't give you a real sense of where we were at right now at this point in time. So I pulled three years' worth of data. The time period was September to January, year to year. So what you're looking at in front of you here is that in 2223, there were 140 superintendent's hearings. So there weren't 140 different scholars. There were just 140 incidences that resulted in superintendent's hearings. We reduced that number significantly in 2324, down to 103 incidences that resulted in a superintendent's hearing. And in that same timeframe, because of the proactive work we did last year and the prepping that we did with the deep dive into the Code of Conduct and the restorative practices work, at the same timeframe this year, we stand at 56 incidences that resulted in superintendent's hearing. So while we don't want any young people to be brought to a superintendent's hearing or have an infraction that results in a superintendent's hearing, we feel really proud of the work that we have done to date to bring us closer to where we need to be with regards to compliance. And the other piece that I would say is where I know we have done tremendous work is that in 2223, with 140 incidences that resulted in a superintendent's hearing, those incidences ranged. You could have students that were coming to a superintendent's hearing for an incident of vaping, all the way up to possession of a weapon or a physical altercation. In 2324, we really started to streamline that and become more aligned across the district with the deep dive that the Code of Conduct Committee had done to ensure that infractions were, were, were put in place more consistently and more similarly across, you know, the K-12 spectrum. This year, I'm confident that with only 56 incidences, that is telling us that that work that the Code of Conduct Committee did is really giving us a streamlined process where the 56 incidences, when I did a dig into what those incidences were, the incidences were all very similar in nature, and there wasn't the wide breadth of incidences across low-level infractions to more serious infractions. So it's really good to see that continual decline. So now I want to look at that data with you a little bit deeper. So what I did was then pulled the 56 incidences of superintendent's hearing and broke out each of the incidences. So what you're looking at here is a chart that demonstrates the number of incidences resulting in superintendent's hearings. And although we're only identified for special education males, I wanted to give us the full picture here, and then we'll continue to kind of go one layer down. So 26 of the incidences involved scholars who identify on a demographic as Hispanic, 22 for black, four for white, two for Native American, two for multirace, and no Asian. So that is how the 56 specific incidents break out across the demographic. And so why I have the row with the 22 incidences involving black scholars is because that is the concerning area with regards to the disproportionate use of superintendent's hearings in relation to their percentage of the population of total students. Oh, and I should explain that in the 56 specific incidences, there are three, and actually I want to go back one more slide. There are three repeat scholars in the September to January of this year, and the good work that was done in 2324, there were six, I'm sorry, eight scholars that were repeat scholars. So the process and protocols that we put in place for checkpoints, re-entry planning, and wraparound services are doing the work to prevent scholars from having repeat superintendent's hearings. We're not exactly where we want to be, but definitely progress forward. So now I want to look at the specific 22 incidences this year that are involving black scholars. So when I broke out the 22 incidences, there were 18 incidences that involved black males who identify with special education and four incidences with black females. So I'm going to dig into the next layer with just the black males because that is the area in which we are identified for the previous year. So remember, the identification that we're sitting with right now is from the data that was from last year. Nothing we can do about that data, but what we can do is focus on the commonalities with these young people right now so that we're making the shifts moving forward. So 18 of the 22 incidences involved special education black males. I'm sorry, 18 of the 22 incidences involved black males. Eight of the 18 incidences were students who have a special education classification. 10 of the incidences were with students who are in the general education classification. So when you look at this, although again, it's not good that we have these superintendent's hearings at all, what is good is that when we look at this, we're not seeing the same trends that we have seen in previous years where disproportionate superintendent's hearings are being imposed on special education scholars versus general education scholars. And just for a further look at that, for the 18, 14 of those were high school age scholars and four of those were middle school scholars. And in the general education classification, to break it down a little bit further, three of the 10 students were middle school scholars and seven of the, the remaining seven were high school scholars. And all of these incidences are infraction codes that are connected to physical altercation, verbal threat with aggression, or possession of something that can be classified as a weapon. Now, what you'll see when I talk about in a minute is that there are other intersecting factors that you see on these, but that's really good to know, that those are the three codes that you're seeing consistently, that we're not having a misaligned approach to how we're supporting our scholars who are having a difficult time navigating the traditional day because the codes for the infractions are aligned, which definitely didn't happen a few years ago, which is a good, a good thing. So I want to make sure that we continue to ground ourselves in that every scholar, including our young people who are having a difficult time navigating the traditional day, have commonalities. And we know that these young people have the capacity to grow and change, that they can overcome challenges, that even if they're struggling right at this moment to express their goals, they have goals and we need to help them articulate them. They need continual reminders about their worth and their potential. They need positive affirmation and encouragement, not negative interactions. They demonstrate that they're resilient, that even in the face of struggling to navigate the traditional day, they continue to come back and engage with us, even if it's in ways that are somewhat misunderstood. These young people are natural leaders. They have the ability to influence their peers, even though sometimes it's not recognized in a positive way, they are influencers. And they have a voice and they are communicating with us. They might not be communicating with us in ways that we might communicate with each other, but their behaviors are communicating things to us and we need to be listening. So some of the challenges that I see us as working on together because of the commonalities that all of the students that I'm dug into and looked at, all of the things that they shared. These students are students that have either been chronically absent according to the federal guidelines or have a history of absenteeism. They're students that are putting in place school avoidance tactics, maybe cutting class, disengaged. They're having academic challenges, so they're either leaving ninth grade, credit deficient, or are in other grade levels, credit deficient or not reaching proficiency standards. They have either had previous superintendent's hearings or a number of— They have either had previous superintendent's hearings or a number of other incidences that have acted like the stepping stones, right? So it's been suspension, 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 suspension. They come from lower socioeconomic statuses. They have limited engagement with wraparound resources because it's often difficult for them to tap into those resources. They're students who have experienced trauma, have mental health struggles, maybe undiagnosed or untreated, or seeking support for well-being. They're struggling with emotional regulation, have a difficult time with conflict resolution, often have a difficult time with impulse control. And they have a high association with their peer relationships, meaning they are peer influencers, so their behavior is influencing others as well as they are being influenced by peer, peer relationships. So I want to make sure that we call out the encouraging trends and the successful interventions. Overall, this year, the same time period that I've studied for the last three years, there's a noticeable decline, not just in the total number of superintendent's hearings, but it's each month there is a decline. The Board of Education's work in policy development, the support for new structures in administration, new positions, just support of the work that the buildings are doing, the way that it's operating transparently, and the way that it's earmarking funding. There have been key policies that this Board of Education has spent tireless hours working to get through and get approved for us. The Code of Conduct is one example of that. That was an intense amount of work, and the end product was a much more restorative approach to how we support our young people. Your belief in administration's ability to develop low-level infraction decision trees so that no longer are we putting in place a long-term exclusionary outcome for a scholar who is skipping classes. Principals hearings and the opportunity for administrators to engage with families and our young people in a totally different way this year as opposed to coming right to a superintendent's hearing. The master schedule review and your faith in us going to extended double periods and single periods. That has enabled us to really look at a group of young people that are currently sitting in ninth grade classes that, I'm sorry, that are currently 10th graders that left ninth grade, credit deficient. So the ability to have single and double periods is enabling us to close those gaps for them by providing them with opportunities to take half of a year, complete ninth grade English, but in their 10th grade year, the second half of the year, complete 10th grade English. So we're able to close those gaps when our young people are credit deficient. Mindset shifts across our entire learning community, and this is every level of the organization. You, you see it, you feel it when you're in the buildings. This year, we're embarking on year-long professional development with Leader and me, and an emphasis on restorative practice, practices, and we really feel that this has fostered a more supportive and caring environment for our young people, and this is evidenced in the survey data that our young people are telling us, that they walk into our spaces and they do have trusted adults that they can lean on. The positive school culture and climate efforts, our building legacy plans, which was a new implementation for our buildings this year, all have goals that are targeted at reducing exclusionary practices and out-of-school time. Valuing our scholar voice, supporting us through our multi-tiered systems of support development, and adjusting the morning arrival at middle schools. Additionally, we can't do this work without the partnerships that we have with our community organizations. We rely on organizations like Parks and Rec, our local barber shops, the Orange County Department of Mental Health, ADAC, and city agencies to really lean in with our young people, and they have been incredible. As well as the partnership that we have with the New York State Education Department's Technical Assistance Center, the data review, case study analysis, and professional development that we've already partnered with them on has been really transformative for our administrators. And then just our continual focus on our scholar experience, changing up academic offerings, responding to our young people's needs by changing engagement offerings and making a wide variety of opportunities for them, and having trusted adults for each young person to connect to. So what are we still digging in on and what's really working? Well, even when we have our young people who are experiencing a difficult time navigating the traditional day, and we've had to have an incident that has resulted in a superintendent's hearing, one thing that we have been doing really consistently this year is saying that there is a recommendation for an extended period of out-of-school time. But what we have partnered with families to say is, that sort of sits over here, but if you can do these things, maybe it's gaining access to a wraparound support, maybe it's someone who has an undiagnosed or untreated mental health condition, and it's getting them connected to a clinical environment. Maybe it's the family engaging in a course with their young person on resolution, right? Then what we say to them is, we're willing to reenter you back into the traditional school environment earlier. That's been very successful with that, for us. Those check-ins and those touchpoints with our young people have really continued to help us to revise how we look at out-of-school time. Additionally, our partnerships with the Orange County Department of Mental Health and for clinical services, not school-based counseling, which is what we provide on the, you know, in and out of our buildings, but clinical support services has been really powerful. And our brand-new partnership with ADAC for substance abuse support is going to be great. Our school-based counseling to make sure that our young people have access to resources to help them with their emotional well-being needs, and the academic support and engagement that we're providing. Every time we have a suspension, the New York State Education Department says that if you are of a certain age, we are not required to provide instruction to you. And this board and the administration has committed to saying that it doesn't matter what age you are, if you are an active student in this school and you come before us for a superintendent's hearing, we're going to continue to provide academic support for you outside of that. So that's a really powerful thing to be providing both compulsory and non-compulsory students with academic supports. And our brand-new At Promise Micro School, which currently has five young scholars enrolled in it, is really something that this board should be proud of being willing to kind of take the risk and work with our families and our young people at ensuring that we're providing them with a really powerful experience that meets their specific needs. It's been a really wonderful program. The early anecdotal information that we have on that is that our scholars are seeing success, and we're really looking to grow that. And we're really leaning in on our families, engaging them through calls, meeting, and providing counseling and support. And I have to tell you that even with our young people who are attending the At Promise Micro School, we would not be able to be seeing the success that we're seeing right now without their support. So our family support has been really powerful. You know, it's not ideal that we have been identified for suspensions, and nobody really ever wants to be in that position. But if I go back to just really quick, one slide, just to show you. The pool of scholars that, you know, is the total scholars enrolled in the category is 343 scholars. And the lever is the number of scholars that are suspended more than 10 days. And if you turn that just a little bit either way, right, by one, one to two students were not identified, up by one or two more students, and it's a much more disproportionate suspension, right? So it's really important for us to understand that, you know, these are young people that we're talking about that have, you know, real distinct and unique needs. And so what I wanted to share with you is that, you know, our current enrollment sits at 7,400 students. Like I said earlier, there were 53 students that had an incident that resulted in a superintendent's hearing. And so what that means is that there's 99.2% of K through 12 scholars that haven't had that experience at all. So the majority of our young people are doing really wonderful things. It does not mean that we don't still need to do that work. We need to uncover this, we need to figure out why, we need to understand where those intersecting levers are and how we can amplify the supports that we have in our buildings because we have them to help our young people. It's an obligation that we have, but a lot of our young people are doing really wonderful things. And so this just sort of ends it just by saying like, I know that we still have work to do, but I'm confident that with the support of this Board of Education, who has been an incredible partner to not only me but to our administration and all levels of the organization, that we can continue to see positive trends.
Thank you, Ms. Creedon. I'm gonna start off with my brethren to my left because he has been a vocal, positive person when it comes to finding ways to really lower our suspension rates here by, for, for lack of a better way of putting it, is finding out the reasons. You know, very often in the past, it was about, you did something wrong, this is your punishment. We didn't want to know why you did it. We didn't want to do, it's different nowadays. So I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Mr. Mitchell Williams, who was very integral in making sure this was a priority for the board.
I just want to commend you on that presentation and not just you, just your staff and just all the educators, definitely the family members, social workers, IELs, MPD, because obviously it was just a, the whole village, it's a group effort. And, and, and I say men lie, women lie, numbers don't. You know, I'm a data guy, like let me see exactly, and we can see how it decreased. It's just what that is. And it's based on the work that has been done. But you had the courage to do the work. Because like, like we'll see, maybe it's not a, a lot of our population that are getting into these situations, but you still took the time to like, no, 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 we still going to address that. If we see a problem, we have to go and address that. We're just not going to leave it there. We're going to do something to try to make this thing better. And the work continues to go on, but the evidence is just right there, you know, it's very exciting for me to see the direction that we're going in this. And like with everything else that's been going on as well, the positive things that's been going on, me and Ed were just talking about that, you got to make sure, we, we make sure we got to highlight the good things that's going on. You know, that's why I just showing that 90, at the end, showing that 99% was like, yeah, yeah, a lot of, a lot of our youth are doing great things, which I know they are. But even the youth that are struggling, you should, you see that they're trying to get it back right. And, and once again, I got to commend the educators and the people who's in those schools for changing that mindset, you know, like with the Code of Conduct, changing, putting into a mindset of hope instead of a defeat mindset, like, oh, I'm not doing well, so it's probably over for me. No, 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 no. You still have the opportunity to get back right. You still have the opportunity to catch up to your class. That's big. That's major. Because as youth, with me and Fox, dealing with the youth all the time, we know a summer or incident can change, change their mindset. And I, also, I definitely want to commend the community resources that's stepping up. Just watching Fox, as far as just being, being a barber, on his barber shop in the community, always willing to help out with a kid, and his other barber shops as well, they always step up, like, hey, this kid wants, he needs something to do. All right, send him over here, Mitch. Send him over here immediately. And that's big, and that's a part of it, because now you got a place of accountability, you know? And with the parents, like we talk about, me and Ms. Perino, we always talk about the importance of the involvement of the parents and the parents being involved in this and saying, yes, yes, I'm going to trust you and trust your decisions and, because I want my kid to win. And obviously, we all want the kids to win because this is our city. So definitely, I commend you on this. Thank you very much for this work.
Thank you. Thank you. Pastor Williams?
I just want to say thank you, thank you. The numbers don't lie. Mitch just said it, the numbers don't lie. And this work has been something that's been ongoing for a number of years. And so I want to thank you, your team, the team, all, everybody that's involved in this from, from side to side. I never say top, top to bottom, from side to side, because we're all working, working together. The numbers don't lie. And, and while it is never ideal to have any of these suspensions, I, I appreciate the fact that you said that this work has to continue because that's how we maintain. So we're in this boat together, and I'll probably say something about that during roundtable real quick, but we're in this boat together and we all have to roll together. I might be a little bit stronger than, well, I'm not stronger than Mitch. Mitch is probably stronger than I am. And, and, and so maybe he, he can pick up some of the slack, but that's what we're here to do. We're here to support one another. Where I'm weak, you're strong. Where I'm strong, where you're, where you're weak, I'm strong, but this is what we're in here to do. And so our community is being impacted by this work and by this partnership throughout our entire community. So I, I have a lot more to say, but I, I'll stop there because I just want to applaud you. This is, I've, I've grew, I grew up in this town, so I, I know many of the struggles that we've had over the years, you know, 40, you know, 40 years, 40-plus years since I graduated from high school, you know? But it's, it's, I'm, I'm encouraged. I really am encouraged, so thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Ms. Romero?
Thank you for the presentation. Great presentation, very eye-opening, and just thank you for, well, to everyone involved.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Thank you. Amy, thank you in your deep dive into this, this, I don't want to say situation, this, what's another word for it? Work. A deep dive into the work with, with this suspension rate and commending Mitch Williams for highlighting this situation a long time ago and bringing it to the forefront. So, you know, there's a, there's a cause and effect, so Mitch highlighting it was the cause, and you, the effect was you guys taking a deep dive and actually coming up with this great presentation and with numbers. I'm like Mitch, I'm a numbers guy. It's, it's refreshing to see the decline, right? But there's also always work to be done. It's refreshing and humbling to be a part of the village that can help any situation with any kid. Like Mitch said, if he calls on it, it's not even a, it's not even a thing, you know? And I know where his heart and his mind is, you know, where they're at. And it's, this was really, really a great thing to see, and, you know, I commend all, like you said, MPD, Parks and Rec, you, you and the whole team, counselors within the, within the district admin. So this was really a great thing to see, and I, I commend all you guys.
I'll be quick. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. And I'm more, more of like a, in our approach of understanding that the interventions that are put in place are, is really driving down the, the numbers when it comes to this matter. So, you know, continue to do the work, and I'm looking forward to the future success of, you know, getting to that 100% where we have no levels of superintendent hearings that we ever occurred. So I'm looking forward to that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino?
Thank you, President Estrada. A couple of questions here, Amy. In that number of suspensions, what is the rate of recidivism?
So this isn't number of suspensions, it's just superintendent's hearings. That's where we're digging in first. So that's 56 incidences, and so that's 53 scholars. So there are three scholars in the group of 56 that are a repeat for a second superintendent hearing.
And do you attribute restorative practices for this decline, any, would that be? And do you attribute restorative practices for this decline? Any, would that be part of it or not?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that we are refining our practices, getting a lot better at identifying through the use of the new Code of Conduct alternates to, you know, diversion practices as opposed to going to an exclusionary, out-of-school component.
And the third question is, what is the, have you had any feedback to members of the faculty on this decline?
Yeah. I mean, I think like, the evidence that I could share about the way that our faculty has really embraced the idea of, you know, maybe call it like, cover me until I recover, is that, you know, when we started to vocalize the need for the At Promise Micro School, there were some that might have thought, you're not gonna get individuals who are gonna want to work with those young people. Remember, right now, the At Promise Micro School is in the evening only, right? And so, you've got educators that have worked a full day, counselors, student support facilitators, administrators, they worked a full day, right? And now, to ask them to stay until the evening where scholars come back into the building who have had a significant disciplinary incident and they need, they need care. They need someone who wants to wrap their arms around them and provide them with academic support. And we have more teachers interested in being a part of that work than not. More teachers than we could use, more counselors and support staff. So, I think that that although isn't necessarily a factual number, it's telling us that our educators and support staff at all levels are ready to do this work because this school community matters to them.
So, you don't see any pushback on the faculty on this, by the faculty?
I think that largely, it has been embraced. The new Code of Conduct has provided opportunities for our young people to see different outcomes. And they have been a part of the discussions, the thinking, the planning. So, I think that by and large, it has been very positive. Anytime you have any change, there's certainly some people that, you know, there's misalignment in the beginning because you were doing it one way for so long and now we're changing that up. But, I think that they see the positive outcomes as a result of that and they've been cheerleaders for our young people.
So, you would say that, from what I'm hearing, you would say that approximately 90% or 95% of the faculty embraces this, or 98%?
I mean, I don't have a specific number, but I would say that I'm not hearing complaints.
Okay. Well, that's good because faculty morale is one of the most important items you can have in any school building. If you lose your faculty, you lose your school.
Yep.
So, good for you if that's the case.
Thank you, Ms. Perino. Just a reminder, just because there's less superintendent hearings doesn't mean there's not accountability for the student. There is still, there is still some sort of accountability that a student faces. It's just an appropriate accountability as opposed to whitewash of everybody automatically, whether you're caught vaping or you're caught with a knife or is gonna get the same punishment. That's not what we're saying here. But, you know, so there is accountability. So, we don't want to give
Absolutely.
the impression out to the public that there's no hearings, so that means nothing's happening.
No. And remember, remember, these are not all of the other myriad of instances that can result in an alternate type of consequence, right? All I'm focusing on in this presentation is the superintendent's hearings. But, I think that if anybody sat down and looked at our data, if you have an individual who is engaging in a behavior that doesn't meet the expectations and you do an out-of-school suspension, and then you do another out-of-school suspension, and then you do another out-of-school suspension, and then you do another out-of-school suspension, it's like going to the doctor and saying you don't feel well and they're prescribing you medication, and you keep going back and they prescribe the same medication and you don't get any better. You have to start asking, is that the right medication? And so, that's what our superintendent, I'm sorry, our disciplinary data is telling us, is that time after time after time, the same young people with incident after incident, it means like, the medicine, right, isn't working. We need to change the intervention. So, that's what this part of this process is.
Always have to do what's right for the student, what's right for the school.
Correct.
Absolutely. We only win when we're all winning.
That's right.
Ms. Turet?
Yes, I'm gonna applaud the efforts in your presentation. Again, the numbers are trending in a wonderful direction. You know, I've been involved in this district now for at least seven years and I've seen the process and how it happens. I mean, a lot of the procedures and the practices that, you know, we have put in place over the years, you know, have continued to work. I think one of the main things is, and I'm gonna be brief, is that, you know, I always talk about building relationships, you know, and those relationships are not just during the school day, but it's in the community and working with kids and extracurricular programs and activities, exposing them to other opportunities that will allow them to just be able to vent, to be able to have conversations, work through conflict resolution. We have put a lot of programs into place. I know with the professional development, with the teachers and just building, you know, beyond their implicit biases and their thoughts that they preconceive in situations and continue to grow and to understand how they can be better teachers. And I think, I wrote a couple of things down here, the extracurricular programs, the community outreach, the related services, the conflict resolution, the restorative practices. All this stuff continues to allow kids to see that we have a goal in mind to keep them in the classroom and away from being suspended. I wanted to ask you also, Amy, about how many kids are in the At Promise program right now as we speak?
Right now, there are four or five students. One leaving and one entering.
Alright. And again, I just want to say, you know, again, Brother Mitchell, John Williams, before I came on this board, we always talked about how we can reach these kids. How can we, you know, help them become better learners, you know, and look beyond their problems, their concerns at home and things of that nature. And we work in the community. I know pretty much everybody here, they're very actively involved in the communities. So, they see the kids, myself and the YMCA, as a basketball coach with music and drama. So, when you see kids outside the school day, they appreciate you more during the regular school day. And so, they're less prone to act out. So, again, great job. Appreciate everybody's efforts in this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Turet. Mr. Bison?
Thank you, President Estrada. First and foremost, I want to thank you for recognizing the hard work that our Assistant Superintendent Camila Doma and the Code of Conduct Committee did for the revisions that occurred. That revision was significant. It was the difference between night and day. I wrote a few notes down just so that I was, and John, you raised some questions, but you need to look at that Code of Conduct. It's by grade level and offenses. And if you do it one time or if it's a repetitive offense or file...
Impression.
Yeah, thank you. So, there's a lot that's taken into consideration. And I can't tell you, and I think you do realize, how affirmative, how positive and how supportive I am with your, what did you, At Promise Micro School. That's the way to go. I've been on it for the last year saying to you, you know, about, and I understand now it's night school. I worked in a night school, as you well know, and I repeated that. Yes, they've taught all day, our teachers, our staff, and they're back there at night because they care. And all I can say, it's like, you know, with the computers, when we all had to go to computers, there were some of us that jumped right in. And I'm sure there are some teachers that are jumping right in to help support the micro school. And I'm sure there's the resistance. And that's just life and part of it. But, you know, Amy, that you have my complete support when this comes. And again, the work that was done on the Code of Conduct was monumental. And I'm sure that helped to attribute to the success of what we're seeing now with the decline in the number of suspensions. So, thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Tavison. Ms. Avila?
I'm passionate about this. He's passionate one way. I'm passionate with it.
Passion is good.
With this presentation that you presented, I really like, it like opened my eyes because, like as a student, when you're doing something good or when you're doing something bad, you want an adult, someone that you look up to to say, oh, I can help you more if you're doing something good. And even when you're doing something bad, what can I help you into changing?
Yep.
Because the same way as like a parent, you will say, see your kids' grades going down, you'll be like, take away their phone because it's a distraction. But, you know that you're at least helping them into focusing more. And like, with the block scheduling and all, at first I was like, oh, what is this for? Like, I'm just gonna be there 90 minutes. But, when you walk by, like going to bathroom breaks, you see that the hallways are less crowded. People are actually intending classes. They, I don't know, like by experience, if they're paying attention, but at least they're there in their classes.
She's truthful.
Yes. But, yeah, with like, data like this, because I'm like a visual person, I can see like the decrease in how much it's very, like decreased it a lot. I don't, I'm trying to like, think of what I'm to say. But, I can see, like seeing it here as a data and also like seeing it in the high school, it is something that is worked on. And it's like, with like My Brothers Keepers, because it's like more, I see more of a black male students going in there. I feel like with programs and all, it does help because sometimes students don't like the school part, which is the learning, but they do love the programs and all. And those programs are what like helps decrease them. Because they're like, as it's like a student athlete, you might be angry at somebody because of what they're saying at the internet, but you know that you have a promise of doing your sport and you know that you do one, you slip up one time and it's like you have the repercussion. And it's just like having those adults that you can go to and then maybe like having ways to like work on those bonds with like, the therapist and all to see. Because it's like hard as a student and as like, because you know, teachers are mandated reporters. You try to like say stuff to not like, not saying that you're doing something bad, but it doesn't sound in any way and all to be like scared. But, like finding ways to like create those bonds with those teachers. Because I see like all the time, the same students that like walk into the school, they skip the lines and the back checks. They're just sometimes roaming around the school. But, it's not because they don't want to be here. It's just like, they just have to find that relation with that teacher and to really stay in school and all. Yeah.
Oh, that's good. No, that's a really good point you made about My Brothers Keeper though. Because that's a small microcosm of how we deal with disproportionate suspensions of black, young black men.
Yeah.
And how that program has helped them to really have a focus and mentors to help them move forward. That's good. Thank you.
Yeah. Because with My Brothers Keeper, I see Mr. Brown there all the time. He makes sure that he recruits everyone and anyone because he's, they don't discriminate. And it's just, programs really help students and like anyone to like build more relations. Because sometimes like acting up is mostly because they don't have a like secure relation with something or someone and all.
Yeah, that's true. 100%. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. And, you know, Ms. Tavison took my thing I wrote down. Wanted to make sure we thanked Camille for all her hard work. I wrote it down, but you beat me to it in regards to the Code of Conduct. So, the only question I had was, of the 56 incidents, are there any of them that was one altercation that encompassed several students and that each student is an incident? Does that happen?
This was 56 independent superintendent's hearings that involved 53 students. Some of them were a repeat. But, your question about how we log it in the New York State reporting is a very poignant one. Because if there is a, an incident of physical violence inside the school, the way that you code it, right, it gets, if there's three people involved, it almost treats it like there were three separate incidences.
Yeah, that's...
And it's one incident involving three different individuals. Yeah.
Okay. But, and that's not part of our 56?
No. Ours is...
So, ours is...
No, that's not necessarily...
Different transactions, let's say?
I want to clarify that though. It's not necessarily true because there are absolutely, like when I look at the incidences that brought us here, one of them was a physical altercation that took place in September. It involved five students. So, it was one incident of a physical altercation and there were five students and the five students were brought to a superintendent's hearing.
And they're part of that 56?
Yes.
So, that's, that's my point. So, yeah. So, it's not 56 fights, let's say?
Correct. No.
It's, it could be one fight with five people and that five gets counted towards the 56.
Correct. Yes.
So, that, I, that's
Yes.
what I wanted to get the point across a little bit.
Amy, can I ask one more question? Just quickly, that sample size of September to January, would that be any different if you did from January to June? Or what made you just zero in on that sample?
Well, I will do an end-of-year report to you, just like I did last year. But, I wanted to give you a three-year look. So, I just didn't want to give you whole school year, 22 to 23.
A full year and a full year.
Because then I don't have this whole school year. So, I wanted to take the same chunk of time over three years. So, I'll come back in the spring and do, or late, early summer and do my end-of-year report.
So, thank you.
And I hope it continues to trend down.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, five just thoughts.
So, in the interest of time, what I'm going to do is request respectfully that we table 14A and 15A and go right to 15B unless anybody has any objection.
Thank you, Ms. Turet.
Seeing none, then we'll head on to 15B of our agenda, which is our Audit Committee report. Ms. Tavison, all yours.
Thank you very much. What I need from the Board is an approval of our minutes from the September 30th, 2024 meeting that we had. So, do I have a motion for the approval?
So, move on that.
Move, Mr. Perino. I need a second. Second by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I just, motion passes unanimously. We did have a meeting on February 3rd. At that time, we reviewed the weekly claims reports from September 23rd and September 30th from October of '24, the 18th, 24th, 28th, from November of '24, meetings 4, 13, 18, and 25, December of '24, December 2nd and 9th. Those are all the claims that we received. Each board member receives these claims weekly from our superintendent. Any board member can request an inquiry about the claims that they're looking at. And we do look at these claims. We have, this time, what they did was, they took the date, they put the vendor and they put the amount so that we could discuss them. It's not just for the Audit Committee. I can't emphasize that enough. Any board member can review the weekly claims report and submit their concerns. I think I left out, we did do January, January 6th, January 23rd and the 30th. And we did review all of the treasures reports that will be reflected in the next minutes that you will receive. And our next meeting is until April 7th. Oh, I got that right. Thank you. So, until then, if you have any questions... So, uh, until then, if you have any questions, uh, we did decide, Mr. Tuttle, help me, we did decide on what were we going to review this year? And it's the food?
Food services.
Food services. So we will do a thorough, in-depth look at their claims.
Every year for the public's education.
Does anyone have any questions?
Every year for the public's education, um, the audit committee, um, with some recommendation from administration decides what's certain areas within the school district will have, um, a little extra scrutiny, so to speak, from an audit perspective. So this is time.
We looked at the, at what's been reviewed in the past several years, and it's been a while since, uh, that has been looked at. So. And we do have board members as well as community members on the audit committee. Mr. Moore, Mr. Perrino, Mrs. Knapp, and, uh, Mrs. Blumenau.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Bison. Um, I did promise, uh, board member roundtable tonight, so we'll start off with Mr. Bison. You want to start off with roundtable?
I'll pass.
Okay. Mr. Rett.
I just want to acknowledge, um, real quick, um, John talked about, um, William Carter. And, um, when I first moved up here in 2002, and he knew that I had a, um, just finished my principal administration, um, program. He sat down and talked with me, gave me a lay of the land and, and, um, you know, just, um, familiarized me with, um, what to expect and things of that nature. And I just want to say that, um, we've come a long ways from there. And I, so I want to give him his respect and give him his flowers. Uh, he was incredible man. He was larger than life. Um, I wanted to just say, um, some of the things that are going on in the high school, you know, really proud of, um, several events that are going on, in particular. Um, congratulations to the winter graduates. You know, we had multicultural celebration, um, as well as, um, what's happening with the MBK program, stirring up and increasing, um, different activities and opportunities, um, for the students. And, um, just look forward for two more continued success.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Mr. Perrino.
I wanted to go on, it's too late to go on with this immigration, that workshop I took right now.
We can do it at a committee report next meeting, if that's good.
I have committee reports, but I'm going to skip those tonight. It's late. I just want to thank, uh, Norma, you did, the first meeting, you did very, very well. I want to, I want to thank you for that. Your comments were good, and you were very poised here, and it's like you've been here forever.
And I put her, and we put her on the spot. We put her on the spot with the Spanish translations tonight.
That's all I'm going to say in it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Perrino. Appreciate it. Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be pretty quick. I just want to say congratulations again, Norma. And, um, I didn't mention this, but I actually did have an opportunity to attend, uh, presidential for the cultural event, and it was actually outstanding, um, the students, their level of confidence to be in a public setting. I had pictures and everything in video. But it was just to see them in their element, um, and just being able to be that level of attention and be able to get their message across on a ti- like constant basis, because it was all stations set up. That was pretty cool. And also, too, I didn't mention that, uh, my daughter is actually one of the students that's receiving the Town of Woke Hill Award on the 27th. I didn't mention that earlier. Um, other than that, um, have a good night. I know it was late, and, uh, it was definitely a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend our student population. Within the last week, I've been able to go to a boys' varsity basketball game. I think it was against Newburgh. And the girls', uh, game against Pine Bush. I'm guessing close to 1,000 people in that gym?
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
And everyone acted accordingly. High, you know, high-temperature games, and even if something did happen, everybody acted accordingly. Security did a great job. I want to give a, um, salute to, um, Dave Coats and the whole athletic department. Um, having that many kids in an environment like that, as competitive as it was, it was super impressive to see the structure that, and of course, Ed, you know, you were there, um, the structure and, um, resilience of the kids in the crowd, the parents, um, to get two towns together. And, um, you know, clash on the court, but respectfully, give handshakes at the end, the coaches handshake. It was, it was, it was a really cool environment to be at. Um, and for both. The, I mean, the girls' basketball culture in this area has risen a lot within the last, I want to say, two years. And that's, and that's really good to see. So literally, when I went in, the boys' game, 1,000 people. The girls' game, 1,000 people. So it was really refreshing to see it. And, you know, our facility is top-notch. They were, they, it was, it was really good, a really, really good environment. And I look forward to seeing, um, like Ed said, I think the girls have the opportunity to, um, they're going to be in the playoffs.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And they have the opportunity to, uh,
Second seed or third seed.
Right, to go further. So I'm excited about that. And, um, you know, just in general for the district, we're at the midway point, you know, and, uh, just wishing everybody a, a, a strong finish in the third and, uh, fourth quarter of the year. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Romell.
I had a flyer I wanted to share. The flyer is for free prom dresses, suits, shoes. Um, the information is on there. I think it's valuable information. Norma, thank you for joining us. I'm so happy to have you here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Gracias. Pastor Williams.
Thank you. Let me, let me start with this. Norma, you are fantastic. Great job. We're so glad to have you here. I wanted to start with that. I also wanted to really quickly tap into the fact, uh, you know, I've talked all night about being on Capitol Hill and being at the state, at the state capitol. Um, I, I, I want to say this is that, um, my trip to DC, I felt like a checkmark, I'll be honest. Um, but that doesn't stop the work. We keep going. I felt more engaged with all of our, all of our state representatives and state senators, um, across the aisle, all very engaging. So, um, I'm grateful for that. Um, I, I, I want to be very careful because I will never abuse this platform. I will never abuse this platform. In previous years, and, and this is not a downer. I think I want to support this district in this way. Um, oh, um, over previous years, we've had many that have come to the mic, who have sat at this, at this table and have abused their, um, the privilege that we have that's set here. I think we all know and have experienced that over the last couple of years. We have come a long way. This is the most diverse board in the state of New York. And, and I applaud that. I applaud this district for all the work they have done. The presentations we've seen tonight, the things that we've, these things that we've talked about is an indication to show that we are moving in the right direction and that we are really fighting this fight, um, together. Uh, I, I am not interested, and I want to say this, I'm not interested in having white friends, nor am I interested in being anybody's black friend. I do not choose my friendships or my relationships based on race or ethnicity. I choose them based on the character and the content of people's hearts. We are experiencing in this hour, in this season, a direct attack against, against our diversity, our equity, and our inclusion. And I say that to say this, we use acronyms so much, um, NICID, um, SWD. But we cannot afford to, to relegate diversity, equity, inclusion to just the acronym of DEI. The words diversity, equity, and inclusion are so vitally important this season because diversity means all. Equity means all. Inclusion means all. Whatever race you are, whatever ethnicity you are, it means all. It means to tear down the barriers that, that do not allow us to have successful outcomes. And so while we are experiencing this, 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 uh, attack against those things, I want to applaud this district for continuing to work and putting in place the foundation for us to continue to do what we need to do. It is a season and a time which, which, I, I want to be honest, I'm just going to say what I say. And I said I was going to, uh, rock, rock the boat a little bit. But, uh, they're, they're literally trying to tear away a history that must be spoken, a history that must be taught, a history that must be shared. And we cannot afford to do that. We are, our history, straight across the board, is too valuable to us because our history will show us where we can go. I want to read this last thing, or I'll say this last thing, "If we do not address the sins of the past, we will be doomed to repeat them." So we must always address the, the sins of the past. Uh, and there's nothing wrong with that. We've all sinned and come short of the glory of God. I say that as a pastor. This is my last, this is my last reading. And you can put yourself in here, whatever ethnic group you are, whatever marginalized group you are. Uh, Martin Nimmer said this. He said, "First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade union, unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews. I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me." Whoever we are, you can put that into your, into your, you can put your, your name, you can put your, you can put your, your life, your ethnicity, your identification, you can put that anywhere in here. We must speak up. And so this platform that we have is a valuable platform. We do not have CNN to speak to. We do not have the platforms of, of, of Fox News. We do not have the platforms of all those different things. But we do have this platform. And if we can affect even just our own city and our surrounding to make sure that we all are safe and that we all are living together and working together, no matter who we are, what our background is, what our socioeconomic standing is, what our color is, then, um, then that's what we need to do in order to secure our safety. I am very passionate about this. And, and, and most of you that, that are here, Mr. Perrino and Mr. Bison, who have been here with me from the, Mr. Mr. Estrada know that this has been something that I've talked about from the very first day that I stepped onto this board, and I'll continue to talk to it. I have more years behind me than I have ahead of me. And I'm old enough to say what I mean and mean what I say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Amen. Ms. Avila, I know that's a tough one to follow. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. You're good. Um, I would like to say thank you all for, um, allowing me to be here and like speak for the students and not, not only that, but like for faculty that are sometimes like after work, they're kind of tired. Um, but being here, I like, I knew, I knew it was going to be a long night. I'm not going to say, I was expecting a short, but I knew it was going to be a long night. Um, but yeah, I, uh, coming to today, I, um, some, how do I say? I didn't come here like with the mindset of saying, oh, I have surveys or all that. I'm just a person that is nosy, but I call it informative. It, I'm just being informative. And I just hear of like what the people like want to say and what the people complain. And sometimes it's, you know, easier said than done. And how we talked about the immigration status is not only me, hearing it, it's also me seeing it, knowing loved ones and all. Um, uh, what I can say, uh, with the, um, presentation you give is something I see all the time. And, um, knowing friends, I'm like, with friends, I would just go, I'm by their, by their side saying, there's other ways to solve solutions. It doesn't always have to go into an altercation. Um, if you're stressed about something, there's many places to go. There are people that you can like fall behind because I know that the district has someone or something so that you can rely on it being violence or abuse of any substance and all. Um, and after that, I'll just say like, um, many programs that we have. I, I, I always tell people, I, I tell my younger siblings that, um, there's a lot of programs that you could benefit with Middletown, like being the dual enrollment, being just EDI. And then you have like athletic programs. There's a lot that they have. And you really can't say that there's nothing that you can't find because even that, like my friend Lawrence Henderson, who started the Black Student Union. He was, you can say like, oh, there's nothing like for me, but he sa- he started something. And now it's like looking for juniors or sophomores to build up more of that Black Student Union group for, you know, like how when you brought it, brought that up, it's like another place that anyone, that both, um, both female and male students can go and feel like they're in a community again. Because, um, a lot of the times when people act up in certain ways is because there's no one there to support. And that's like what people forget. They think there's not a support. It's just more of the not looking for it at all. Because it's sometimes just like, you move your hand, and then you just found out, you move your pen, you move your bag, you move your bookbag, your bu- um, your books and all. You're like looking for a pencil, but you just move the book slightly to the left, and there's a pencil right there. So it's just like, sometimes the support is there, you're just not really looking hard enough for it. And yeah. That's it.
Awesome job. Thank you.
Nice work.
Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Um, excellent night, excellent night. Uh, I just want to commend this board for holding ourselves accountable. You know, at the beginning of the year, we set goals and we set objectives. They were smart, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound. And we sat down with each other and held ourselves accountable. Because that's what it's about. We have nine different people, nine different personalities. We set these goals, and it's our job to do our best to accomplish those goals. And when they're not being accomplished, it's our job to hold each other accountable. And I commend this board for doing that. This board has the tough conversations. We don't mind the tough conversations. We will have them. Because at the, the beginning of the day, the end of the day, how do we hold somebody else accountable if we're not held accountable? That's why I sit here with the utmost integrity. Because I know my heart is in the right direction, and I know the people who I'm with, their heart is in the right direction because we talk. We have those conversations, so we know where everyone is at. Now, we might not agree on everything, but we're always respectful of each other and respectful of each other's position, which is major. So I commend this board for that work. Because it's not easy work, and a lot of people don't want to hold themselves accountable. But just so everybody knows, we are doing that. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell Williams. Um, just a couple of side things as a reminder once again. Um, as Dr. Johnson brought to the podium, uh, the public hearing on March 4th, a very important one. Please, if you have any questions about it, reach out to your local councilman or councilwoman in regards to some of the specifics, uh, regarding the good cause eviction, as well as, um, some other items as well. So that's March 4th at 7:30 at City Hall in the council chambers on the second floor. Um, a reminder to all board members, your superintendent and district clerk evaluation comments are due in the next two weeks, so please get them to me as soon as possible so we can meet our obligations, um, to both of our employees that we have to do evaluations for. Um, our next board meeting will be on March 6th. That'll be a regular school board meeting. And just finally, to piggyback on what Mr. Mitchell Williams just, um, communicated, we've been here five hours today. You know, I, I try to make sure we keep our commitment to nine o'clock. We went over today by a significant amount, but I'm very proud. You all are tired. You all have jobs during the regular day. And then you sit here for five hours and do the hard work that needs to be done. We talked about suspension rates. We added, for the first time in school history, a student to our Board of Education. We talked about the fiscal responsibilities and the projections over the next five years. We addressed, hopefully, a little bit in the beginning, some of the concerns that our community has around what's going on in our, uh, country in this day and age. We did a lot of work for five hours. Be very proud. Sleep well tonight. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Have a nice evening. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Bison, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everybody.
I told you.